Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting of Thursday, October 5th, 2023. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash, Tongva, Pernandano, Tavium, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. With that, I will invite a retired VUSD teacher and longtime community member and activist, Ms. Linda Wormsley, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I seem to remember that when there were dozens of kindergarteners here that would set their own pace to the Pledge of Allegiance. And, you know, yeah. So, anyway, it's great to have you back, Ms. Wormsley. Thank you for leading us tonight in the pledge. You know, you're an example of what makes this community great, right? People stay around, they stay involved, and they stay committed to service. So, thank you, thank you. With that, we will go to a roll call at this time. Ms. Ceterio, can you please take a, like, take the roll at this time?
Member Tabit?
Present.
Member Ponser Kamkar?
Present.
Clerk Aga Khanian?
Present.
Vice President Weissberg?
Present.
President Ferguson?
Present. Okay, we do have all five members present, so we do have a quorum to proceed with the business of the meeting. With that, we will go to reporting out on closed session. Do we have the report out document?
Yes.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion of Member Aga Khanian, which was seconded by Member Tabit, the Board voted in closed session to expunge the expulsion record of student number 960033703. The vote was four, eyes in favor, no, noes against, and zero abstentions. I was absent from closed session today. So, that was the only item that was reportable. Excellent. With that, we will go to item number six, adjustments to the agenda. I'm going to ask that we move the report by Dr. Andrews up to basically what would be a new item eight. We do have a number of small visitors, young visitors, energetic visitors that we want to make sure get in and get home. You opened the door right now, and there's a wall of noise coming in, so it's fantastic. So, we are excited to welcome them as an item number eight. With that, are there items for future agendas? So, I will, I had the opportunity to circle up with some student leaders today on graduation. Hi there, everybody. Our student board members, this is the first time I'm seeing them. And so, would like just a general reporting, a circle up on graduation activities. What's planned for this year, just generally, and like a report back probably before end of semester. And if possible, I would like to pull in Dr. Weissberg and have a meeting with both of the student governments, just to plot out what it looks like, so we can anticipate if there's going to be, you know, things that students really want to make sure are part of that program. So, I'd like to see that come back. Any other items? Seeing none? Perfect. The room, if you can't see from home, because you can't, because I'm looking up, is slowly filling with our little young minds, and we are going to wait for that. It's kind of amazing. Great.
Hello, Chuck. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Robin Anders, Director of Instructional Technology and Accountability. We're doing something new this year, so please bear with us, because this is a new opportunity that we want to take advantage of, of acknowledging all of our students who had a perfect score, basically, on the state assessment, the CASP or SBAK assessment. These students, when I say perfect, they scored perfect because they scored the highest obtainable score on that assessment for their grade level. A couple of things to note about that. Being perfect is not something that happens very often. So, anybody who plays golf, or anybody who has ever played in a baseball game, a perfect game or hole-in-one is something that everybody strives for, but doesn't happen every single day. So, I just wanted to acknowledge with this group of students that this is not an expectation. This isn't something that you can duplicate year after year after year, so I don't want you ever to feel like if you don't have a perfect score, that you are a failure, because that's not the case. Perfect score is something that when it happens, it's kind of like lightning striking. You've done everything to prepare and do your best, and the conditions were perfect for you to have something miraculous happen. And so, we want to acknowledge when something miraculous happens, and that's what we're doing tonight. So, we're going to go by grade level, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and eleventh. We have 70 families, 70 students. We had nine, over 90 students district-wide, but not everyone RSVP'd to attend tonight. And so, we're going to acknowledge them. I'm sure they're going to want to watch this video at home and see themselves, or grandparents, or whoever. So, I just wanted to say that little piece before we start to do our acknowledgements. So, with that, I'm going to have our third grade students line up in front, families find a spot in the gallery to take your, to be able to take a picture. So, our third graders, please come up.
Can we invite board members to come down, so they might be able to take a picture?
Yep. While, while everyone gets into position, I'm going to go ahead and read the names. Elliot Farnsworth, Farnsworth, excuse me, Elliot Farnsworth, Alice Tomason, Margot Doyle, Christopher Ochea, Dominique Sarhoudian, Michael DeCaw, Zachary Weaver, Akash Arissa, Wiley Henry. Third graders, we're going to have you, we're going to have you exit, so the fourth grade group can come in.
Congratulations, they're great pair rentals. Good work, good work.
So, a correction, these are...
We should give them a public apology. We'll issue a public apology with the Dodgers. Yeah, in another way.
It's like, kids are like, "I'm eight and a half," by the way.
Yeah. Until you turn like 30, wound down.
Exactly. By like a decade. So, my mom told me that she was 29, like every year on her birthday, I would be like, "How did you turn that old?" And she told me that, first of all, she had been turned up. But she told me that all the way up until I was like six, and I was like, "Wait a second."
You were 29 last year, right at that.
So cute. Whereas I'm like, "Don't come near me unless you're in seventh grade."
That's right.
I don't know what to do until you're in seventh grade. Very small reason she got it. They're, they're going to come up, they're going to push them all behind. So, they're not getting it, but they're going to, someone else.
No, I don't give a fuck. I want every meeting with 90.
We should start every meeting.
Okay, so these are, they're current fifth graders. I have to make sure, because this is a big deal, current fifth graders, but they scored a perfect score in fourth grade, which again, the highest score obtainable on the state CASP assessment. Let's give them a round of applause real quick. And then what we're going to do is, the students will come forward. I'll read names, and then, not necessarily in order that you are, but we'll have a photo opportunity with the Board and our superintendent and our district staff. So, yeah, students, you can come on forward while I read names. So, go ahead. Josiah Hurant. Michelle Belenka. Emily Templin. Kate Rogers Pope. Alicia Bang. Olivia Ju. Shuhi Muhatra. William Hadi. Anya Rainey. Elena Hernandez. Arreg Malikian. Penelope Bogner. Bogner, thank you, Penelope Bogner. Wesley Lamb. Siddhartha Reynolds. Jax Mendoza. Francis Minetta. And then Anna Abramovich. This is our largest group, fourth grade. Okay, thank you, fourth grade. You may now exit with your parents. Fifth, current fifth graders, current fifth graders.
This salmon, really, salmon, so juicy.
Oh, Sweet Andy, sing. Sweet Caroline.
Sixth graders used to be fifth.
Sorry, guys, we are out of time.
Oh, the strike.
All right, let's see if I know another one. Although I don't know if it counts.
Yeah, the reserved and free bell.
Yeah. Who are you? Come all the way into the front, there are reserved seats up here.
So, these are our, these are current sixth graders who scored a perfect, highest obtainable score on the state CASP assessment last year as fifth grade students. Let's acknowledge our sixth graders who did this achievement in fifth grade. So, students can come up now. I'm going to read the names of all of the students, and then there'll be a photo opportunity. Hudson Hearst. Amelia Smith. Haley Ray. Jack Burke. Amelia Sebastian. Dylan Van Nahu. Vanhala, Dylan Vanhala. Bailey, excuse me, Baylock, Bailey, Bellani Aguilar, my apologies, Bellani Aguilar. Noah Damian Simon. James Dole. Dean Bixler. Ava Landers. Christopher Organosian. Parents, now is the time to take your photo with your student, with the school board and superintendent. Oh, one more student? Sorry. Tony Ellison.
Okay, thank you very much.
Congratulations. Jared's outside.
Congratulations.
Oh, he said so well.
Twice over, right?
Twice.
He had math and English.
Boobank?
She just told me, I didn't know that.
Boobank, Artson and P. You're my little boobank. You're a boobank.
I seriously did not.
Some people had no clue, but the number of texts I got. You were the first to send.
Yes!
I was getting that peanut butter jelly, whatever magic.
Abby sent it to me first.
You didn't get that peanut butter magic, whatever.
So, I got there like, I wasn't there. Oh, no, I got there like, yeah, probably.
So, the, so the problem is, we're making these jelly things look like caviar.
Ooh!
Yeah, you try that.
Sad I missed it. I probably couldn't have even, sadly. They don't have to.
No, they're doing that other.
What others? Rank choice? How is that?
They're doing that instead?
Yeah, it's weird.
Why didn't we get?
I don't know. Rank choice voting is better.
And money to burn, they need to do.
I mean, ours hasn't gone to the county. So, it was time.
I think it cools them, which also gives better odds for the election.
Open to rescinding. What? Yeah, it's a lot. Seventh grader, she's going to have her scores on the sixth grade test.
So, these are our current seventh graders, but they had a perfect score on the state assessment as sixth grade students. Scoring the highest obtainable score on the middle school test gets a little harder, so that, so I really, these kids did really well. Congratulations. We have, okay, so students can come forward, and then I'll read names in no particular order as students get set up to take a photo. Neo Dedasi. Lauren Domes. Apollo Harbaugh. Cooper Brody. Pruteeksha Anan. Kaseenia Balushava. Daniela Azetayan. Arnav Arise. Kumali Shait. So, parents and students will exit, so the next grade level can come in. Thank you so much, congratulations. Stimulating the local economy.
Best start to a board meeting ever. Bye, congratulations!
Three markers. Three markers.
Okay, that's good. Like, I wouldn't see. It will help. Actually, I was asking really good questions. And I was like, "Guys, I'm going to try to not ask questions, because I'm going to ask a question about this, but I want to hear what your thoughts are." Jen actually had a really good point about, she was like, "It really disturbs me that our sixth graders scored the same standard." Right. With the addition, which is not something that I would have done, because I don't have standards that way. I know that standards exist. I was like, "I can't stop thinking about this, I'm sorry, it just keeps coming through my head, like every time, every time we talk about this." I've been watching, rewatching the one on. Show is the gift that he tells me. Oh, the one that you all favorite a lot is the tables one? That's my favorite one. I can't even hear any more about tables. Like, what's her job? Tables! Job is tables! It is in my top, it's in my top line.
This is great a lot of. If you are a ninth grade or 12th grade student, just have a seat for now. We're just, we're just honoring our seventh, current eighth graders who were seventh grade last year. So, this is for our current eighth graders, seventh graders last year. Again, it gets more and more difficult as you progress into grades to get a perfect score on the state assessments. But this group had the highest obtainable score in either English or math on the state assessment. We want to acknowledge them tonight, so please give them a round of applause. So, our seventh graders from last year, please line up, and I'll call your names, and then there'll be an opportunity for a photo. First is William Kersley. Kyle Xavier Ivans. Sophie Adamczewski. Corbin Gunnel. Ray Hill Shaw. And David Hadi. Congratulations to our...
Dr. Anders.
Oops.
Dr. Anders, we have one who got two.
Yeah, there's a couple, got two. Okay, a photo opportunity? What's that? What's that? I did, but I'm gonna hold up. Yeah, I'm gonna do the next. Okay, thank you, parents. And students, you guys can exit, we'll recognize our next group of students. We're gonna, we'll just do them together. Well. We'll do separate, I think they're all in here though, right? Okay, so now we have our last two groups, our current ninth graders, eighth graders last year, if you want to come up. Again, these students had the highest obtainable score in English or math on the state assessment. With us tonight is David Hadi. Adam Matthew Pineda. And Mia Lu.
Congratulations!
Congratulations. Families and students can exit.
Congrats!
Our last group is our current seniors who were 11th grade students last year who had a perfect score. If you guys want to come up to the front. Pretty remarkable to obtain the highest score possible in 11th grade. It's a lot of knowledge. In no particular order, Anthony Oshansky. Aiden Clendenin. Kelsey Finnegan. That concludes our acknowledgements of our students for outstanding performance on our CASP assessment.
Okay, so key takeaways from tonight. One, we want 90 students at all board meetings moving forward, that's exactly kind of the energy. What, what incredible achievement that, that we celebrated here tonight. These are not easy tests, but it comes as a result of a lot of hard work and sacrifice and commitment of our teachers, of our classified and support staff who, who are supporting the education of these students, and of course, our administrators who are working every day to make sure that these campuses are programmed for success. So this was a huge night for everybody and certainly for us as, as board. We also got to see the wonderful classroom management skills of our, of our cabinet, who, Ms., I mean, just impressive. It, it, it just goes to show you how much experience is in the room at all levels and, and it feels good. This is, this is the kind of, the tone that we need to hit moving forward and just want to thank our superintendent and our cabinet and Dr. Anders for preparing this and, and for coordinating this. It took a lot of effort and a lot of work. I also want to thank some of our parents who reached out, who said, hey, you know, these kids are worth celebrating and you know what? They absolutely were. So we celebrate you, we celebrate you as a community and we look forward to next year when, when this will be a whole thing. And we'll know to look for two certificates instead of one, the two fers and, and really to, to call out. It's truly incredible. So with that, we will go to reports from the board. Item 8A, which is our student representatives, my favorite part of the meeting now that it's back, I wasn't able to enjoy it last time. But we'll, we'll start today with Board Member Tessu from John Burrows High School, who I met earlier today. So welcome and come on up for your report.
Good evening, President Steve Ferguson, distinguished school board members, Superintendent John Paramo, district staff, members of the community. My name is Paris Tessu, ASB President of John Burrows High School, and I'm here to give my report on October 5th, 2023. ASB is hard at work preparing for homecoming and we've been working nonstop and we are so excited for the dance next Saturday. Last week was kindness week and our student body enjoyed participating in a spirit week that also spread a little kindness around campus. Last week was our yearly talent show and it was thoroughly entertaining. The audience was engaged, enjoying the acts and snacks of the night. And after homecoming, our next big event on campus is Burrows on Broadway. We're so excited to see the award-winning choirs in the VMA as a whole perform Broadway acts featuring shows such as Once Upon a Mattress, SpongeBob the Musical, The Prom and Jekyll and Hyde. We're also gearing up for Fall Rally and the Homecoming Game against Burbank on the 27th. Many artistic activities on campus are also underway, like yearbook, photo and art. They bring a creative light to campus that is always needed. Clubs are booming, we have multiple clubs every day, giving everyone an opportunity to find something they enjoy. I'm also excited to interna, and I'm sorry, I'm also excited to announce, as a response to student concerns last, from last meeting, we have been approved to bring in a cleaning staff of 20 men being paid time and a half to completely reinvent campus. They will be fixing sinks, power washing the quad and, and other general maintenance this Saturday. And I can take any questions.
No questions, we, we did have a chance to circle up earlier today with the senior class officers and some of the officers from ASB. I was able to visit John Burrows, so thank you for, for welcoming me to your campus. And, and it was a good, just productive end of year meeting, talking about all that is ahead for our seniors and, and very excited for that. So just thank you very much for that opportunity. We also got the opportunity to hear about this, about this kind of sweep that we're doing to kind of, there are, as we've heard over time, there's maintenance issues that are continuing to pile up. This is a part of our issues as a school district. Our lovely principals and administrators are often doing double duty, triple duty, and anybody that can, teachers, classified, everybody's picking up a broom, doing what they can to try and keep these campuses clean. It is challenging, both with minimum wage laws and just frankly bargaining and how we have to work through our process to keep these wages as competitive as possible. We are doing everything we can, but what it means is that we need to take extraordinary measures at times. And I really want to thank Mr. Cantwell, as, as well as Mr. Maxwell, who, you know, really heard what's, what was happening at this campus, which was in severe need, as we were hearing from our students, of just attention. And so we have a bit of a strike force, it sounds like, coming out. And, and what I loved hearing was that Mr. Maxwell and Mr. Cantwell will be there as well. So this is an all hands on deck approach, there is no leader that is above this work. We are all committed to try and make sure that these campuses are as well maintained as possible. But it is something for our community to understand. This is why revenues are important. This is why focuses on facilities are important and planning for facilities is important. But we can have these golden facilities, if, but if we don't have the programs and the funding to keep them going, it's going to be a problem and an ongoing problem that we are not going to be able to solve with time and a half strike forces. So I want to thank you for elevating that because it's a big deal and it's going to beautify that campus. That campus is already amazing, I love the outdoor, or outdoor space. Don't get me wrong, I love Burbank High, Bulldog through and through, but, and Monterey is amazing. And has all the little features that are, what's great about education there. But truly, this is an important moment for our, our community to understand what is happening on these school sites. So they aren't falling into disrepair. I've seen some posts online, what's happening at Burrows, what's happening here? There's a lot of work that needs to be done, there are a lot of campuses that need to be maintained and we need to pay for it as a community. If we want our kids to have the stellar institutions that we get, we want, we gotta pay for it. So with that, thank you for your report. Any further questions on this, Dr. Agapunian?
Thank you. So I was in your last meeting, I just wanted to first of all congratulate you.
Thank you.
Also, as I always tell all of our students, we're here for you. If you ever need to get ahold of any of us, you can contact us. And I'm, I, and I, I don't think I mentioned this before, but it's, it's always amazing to see some of our former representatives in higher education. One of them just took, finished my class, he got an A actually in a business class. But again, if, also, if you ever have any questions about, you know, any other choices for higher education or so, where some of us are here also can help you with, but just wanted to congratulate you personally and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Thank you for all for listening.
Thank you. So with that, Ms. Bilboyan? Wait, did I get that wrong? What is your last name? Emma Odette, come on up.
Thank you so much. Bilboyan. Excellent, I will need to. Good evening, Ms. Odette.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Ferguson, distinguished board members, Superintendent Paramo, district staff and members of the Burbank community. My name is Emma Odette and I'm a senior at Burbank High School as well as the ASB Vice President. I'm honored and excited to be providing a report this evening on all previous, current and future BHS activities. To recap, on September 22nd, ASB posted the foam party, last dip of summer, which hundreds of students attended. There was music, lights, photo booths and a trowel stand and of course, the foam. Students had a great time. On September 23rd, Burbank High hosted a college and career fair where over 100 colleges, universities and technical schools attended. These institutions varied from Cal States, UCs and military programs. Booths were set up to assist in ACT, SAT, test prep and financial aid information. This greatly benefited students and helped them get connected to representatives. As Hispanic Heritage Month continues, flags from Hispanic countries were made and placed around our quad. An interactive poster was displayed where students could paint their hands that represented a flag and mark it on an area on the tree. We also distributed QR codes with Spotify links around campus to highlight Latin musicians. On October 12th, we'll have a series of cultural dances performed on campus in the quad. In regards to the arts, our drama program is presenting Night of the Living Dead from October 5th to October 14th in the Wolfson Auditorium. Also, our show choir is having their annual Night of Magic on October 28th at 6:30. For a sports update, water polo senior night was on October 3rd against Mear High School, where they won 22 to 8. Today they play against Arcadia. Water polo has a 13 to 3 overall record and a 3 to 0 league record. Girls golf has a very exciting season and three players from Burbank High qualified for league finals. They're currently in the top 16, we wish them luck with the rest of their matches. On October 3rd, girls volleyball played against Crescent Valley High School at their Dig Pink game. At the game, there was a raffle fundraiser where all proceeds went to support the American Cancer Society. Their senior night is coming up on Tuesday, October 10th against Hoover. October 13th, football has a game against Hoover, the theme being Pink Out, Barbie versus breast cancer. The game evokes both school pride and breast cancer awareness. Today, our homecoming theme was announced as Miami Lights. Homecoming is on Saturday, October 21st at 7:00 PM. We're currently holding homecoming court nominations and hosting a cutest homecoming ask-out competitions, where winners will receive free tickets to the dance based on their proposal. The week of the 23rd to the 27th, leading up to the football homecoming game, entails an exciting spirit weekend rally. The specific days and lunch activities are in the process of being planned, but we do know our theme will be Halloween movies, where each grade level will be assigned a specific film. In club news, our California Scholarship Federation chaperone is offering free tutoring after school on Mondays and Wednesdays. They're offering free essay editing and one-on-one help in several courses, including AP and honors. The Burbank Mental Health Board chapter recently honored Suicide Prevention Week by selling awareness ribbons and bracelets where they made over $200. Proceeds are being directed towards the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. With the events occurring in Armenia, our Burbank High Armenian Club is actively fundraising. They've been collecting warm clothing and essential supplies for the past two weeks to send to Armenia, working with the United Young Americans Nonprofit Organization. This Sunday, they're hosting a movie night on the Burbank High football field at 6:30 with proceeds being sent to Artsoc. Ten I want to spotlight a senior, Sanjay Domiraudin, for being a semifinalist in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. This is an extreme honor and accomplishment and Burbank High is rooting him on. We have an amazing transition into the school year and are very excited for all of our upcoming events. Are there any questions or clarifications?
Well done, first, I, I will say, I would like to report back on, on what we are doing to support our, the Armenian community at this time, our students in the Armenian community. There's obviously very devastating, very traumatic images coming across and, and there needs to be adequate supports deployed, whether that's mental health, culturally relevant resources. I, I just want to know how we're kind of wrapping our heads around this and supporting them because I don't know how you pay attention in a classroom right now, if, if you have family members in these regions and almost, you know, many do. So that's first, so thank you for your efforts there and, and Ms. Odette, I did not even recognize you. So that is one of the privileges of being on a board for as long as now I've been on the board, is you get to see people grow up. It is such a privilege to see, I was like, Odette, oh my gosh, I didn't even recognize you. So what a great job and congratulations and good luck this year as Vice President.
Thank you so much.
Oh, Dr. Agapunian?
Thank you and congratulations. And thank you for bringing up this dire issue right now. For some of our viewers and people in the audience who don't know, there, there is a second genocide happening in Artsoc as we speak. 120,000 families have been driven out. This includes some relatives of mine and my wife. It's devastating. And it's unfortunate that the world is quiet right now about what's happening over there. You guys, you can look at the images. But I want everyone to not only understand what the situation is for some of our kids here and their families, because they do have, again, families over there, but also understand that this is causing an extra strain because my wife literally is on the phone looking at images crying every day. Because it's also difficult because she can't do much except try to help some, send some help. So I do want to thank all of you and all of our students and faculty and staff and all of our schools for doing all of this work. But I also want to remind people that, that what's happening over there, it's something that needs to be addressed. Sometimes people say, well, we're over here, we don't care. It's a second genocide and it's unfortunate. So if any way or shape, if anyone can help these, our students, or go and talk to some of the families, I know that we're going to provide services, I know that we've done resolutions, but it's the mental well-being of our students and their families that we need to also pay attention to. So thank you for all you're doing and, you know, again, it's very difficult to watch these images as the world is sitting there quietly and silently. Thank you for all you do, please let me know in any way or shape we can help you. I'll be more than interested to know about some of these events as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our last report is from Ms. Najarian. There we go, excellent. And Ms. Najarian is from Monterey High School, so yeah, let me finish that introduction, so go ahead, welcome.
Good evening, Board President Ferguson, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Paramo, district staff and our audience. My name is Isabella Najarian and I am proud to be, been chosen as the Monterey High School rep this year. I wanted this position so that I could build leadership skills and get more involved in the school community. This year I started off very well. All of the students are surprised to see how different Monterey is than what we thought. We can't believe how much support we get from all of our teachers. The small class size really helps appreciate, oh my God, sorry. The small class size really helps participate in our learning. It's not just the teachers, everyone who works at Monterey really wants to be there and they try very hard to make the school great and welcoming. This year, although we do not have an ASB, we have created a Student Council of Class Representatives.
Great.
These representatives meet at lunch once a month to discuss the school, to discuss, to discuss school culture and bring ideas to the group. Mr. Taylor, our Assistant Principal, and Ms. Shraga, our School Counselor, are running the Student Council. So far this year, the Student Council has put together a plan for Hispanic Heritage Month. We have, we have students come on our daily announcements to teach us all about the important individuals in Hispanic history. We all, we also had each class choose a country to learn more about and have a door decoration contest. Each fourth period spent time building unique doors, one class even baked. One class even baked special treats to their country of Guatemala. This October, we are celebrating LGBTQ+ people of history. We have put up a bulletin board in the cafeteria filled with information. We're also recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month by wearing pink ribbons on our ID lanyards and teaching students the importance of a healthy lifestyle. One thing I am working on with Ms. Weaver, our wonderful principal, is the importance of recognizing the conflict in Armenia right now. We have a large Armenian population here in Burbank, and as a community, we need to create more awareness on some of the struggles going on in our home country. Even though this war is not directly impacting us on a daily basis, the Armenian students in the community carry with them the sadness and the trauma of what is going on. Ms. Weaver is meeting with students to find ways for us to be able to communicate and honor the struggles we may be going through. As a high school student in this community, we would like to see Burbank Unified come up with a plan to help some of our families who might be struggling and provide information to the community about the conflict happening in this part of the world. On a very positive note, Ms. Weaver told me we had a 94% graduation rate last year. This was without any special waivers or exemptions due to COVID. That means 94% of our students met the Burbank Unified School District graduation requirements. Ms. Weaver thinks that is the highest in Monterey history. There are still many students that are waiting too long to come to Monterey because of fear or avoidance. We need to work together as a community to help change the perception of Monterey so more students feel like they can come here for support. Thank you for your time today and letting me present. Do you have any questions?
I'll go to Dr. Weisberg first, and then I'll go to Dr. Aga Khanian.
I just want to thank you, and I can also talk to Ms. Shraga, too, but I would love to come visit your student council reps whenever you meet, but I've made no secret about how much I love Monterey, like, very, very much. And so it's so great to hear you talk about it, and I think that's something that we can also work on, which is, like you said at the beginning, people have one idea of what Monterey is, and then you go to Monterey, and it's something completely different. And so it's something that we can work together as a BUSD community to help people better understand what a phenomenal home Monterey is to so many students. So I'm just, I'm thankful to you for bringing that up, and it would be a great conversation for us to continue to have. So thank you for a fantastic report.
Dr. Aga Khanian.
Congratulations, Ms. Najarian. Shunaravod. And again, we're here for you, and thank you for all you do, and thank you for trying to talk about Monterey. We love Monterey, all of us do, and we need more ambassadors like you. And I just also want to acknowledge... Is that your mother over there?
Yes.
Ashanad Louis. Thank you. Thank you very much, and again, we're here for you, and let me know if you need anything.
Thank you.
So Ms. Najarian, I will say, one, we got a little bit ahead of you, but we heard your voice, you know, in that request, in that request for solidarity and support, you know? I'm not Armenian. It still impacts me because it impacts my community, right? When a part of my community is carrying something, right? We all carry it. We all suffer with you. We do. We're less productive, we're more aggressive, we're more angry, right? We're all the things. Why? Because we're carrying other burdens. So my heart goes out to you and to your community, because you are my community, truly. And we need to stand together in these moments, because they're very clear on what's right and what's wrong. So we're with you, and you brought very much a student's voice to this. So what I will ask is that we work with you and other student leaders across the district as well, just to do a check-in if we can with them, and we really get this right, because I think it's important. We don't want students off track, right? You just spoke about a 94% graduation rate. Holy cow. Like, well done, Monterey. Monterey is, as Dr. Weisberg said, it is, it's such a diamond, it's such a jewel in this district that is just beyond... It's not recognized often, so in that way, and it should be. So want to celebrate that, and then I will do what I have done every year, and hi, Mom, congratulations, this is a good moment. I will say, I am very proud that we have our new student board member class. I say this every year, and I believe in it, because I'm living proof of it. I was a student board member in 2005, and I'm the first to become a full board member here. This is absolutely job training. So if you want to spend your time figuring this out, I'm not joking you. When I ran, it was because I learned how to do it in those chairs. So you are not just the leaders of tomorrow, you're the leaders of today. Student board members can make motions, can second motions, heads up, so on everything except for personnel items. So participate, engage. We want to hear your voices, and if you have a ton of questions, guess what? Email them before the meeting, so that way we can get answers to them, because we don't want to not have answers for you. This is a team that is ready to get you answers to problems and concerns, but we can't do that if they're kind of sprung on us. Well, just, they'll take a little bit longer, okay?
Yeah.
So we're really excited to welcome our new class of student board members. It is fulfilling beyond words to see every year the class that comes through. You've done such a wonderful job tonight. Everybody's done such a great job representing your school, so congratulations, and thank you very much for your report. Dr. Aga Khanian.
I do also want to acknowledge my colleagues. Mr. Ferguson might not be Armenian, but he's an adopted son of our community. We call him Fergensonian. And those of you who know, he's been in this fight for a long time, even before he was an elected official, because for him, it's about equality, it's about justice, it's about humanity. And I want to thank you for being, you know, such a great fighter for our community and for humanity. And also, Ms. Tabit is also an adopted daughter of our community. Tabatian, we call her. For those of you who don't know, for my colleagues who weren't before, this was the board who passed the resolution, first Armenian genocide resolution, and we didn't do it for a day, we did it a whole month. But people always ask me, "What does it matter?" It's about humanity. It's always been about humanity. You know, we have such a... I mean, look at this board. This is who we are. This is the diverse board, and these are the students, these are the mosaic that make this community so beautiful. And I think sometimes we have to remember, at the end of the day, all of us have friends and families, and we need to be there as communities, sitting here in the comfort of our homes, right? So I do want to thank Mr. Ferguson and Tabatian. Tabatian, I'll even make it. But thank you for all you've done, and thank you for my colleagues also being supportive. This is very personal to me. I am a child of war, I am a child of refugees, I am a child who suffered through all of this. I'm a child who had to leave his homeland at 14 because of war. It's not easy, and I don't know what's going to happen to those 120,000 families and children, but when I see those scenes, I remember it's the same feeling. When I had less than a month to leave my country, or else my password would have been provoked now to go to mandatory war. Just imagine, as a parent, you read on the news that all of a sudden, the law is going to change. And my parents send me away, not knowing where I was going to go. We didn't have cell phones, we didn't have internet back then. So when I see these images, people in the gridlocks, not knowing what's going to happen to them, just taking every belongings... I left everything behind when I left. My friends, my books, my everything I had, I didn't have a time. Same thing happened with these families. All of a sudden, they are driven out of their communities. Just think about that. Imagine you wake up in the morning, and you're asked to leave all of a sudden. What it does to the families, but also what it does to the children. So thank you for all you do, and thank you to all my colleagues, thank you to our district who's been so supportive of our causes, but these are all humanitarian causes. This is not about Armenians, this is not about... This is about humanity. So thank you for being champions of humanity. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And, but I'm going to say this, it is a product of these schools, right? I got to know members of the Armenian community from when I was very young on the playgrounds of these institutions, right? They became my friends, they introduced me to their culture through food, through dance, through a lot of different things, and through that, I got to know this world better, right? So that's what's really cool about these learning institutions, is that we're learning on the playground as much as we are, and that's where I learned how to develop lifelong friendships, how to walk in other people's shoes. So that's the kind of education you're getting in Burbank Unified. So we've got work to do, you know? Thanks for the acknowledgement, but people are still suffering. But I will say this, you hear about Dr. Aga Khanian's story. I used to work for a man named Adrian Nazarian, who was a refugee from Iran, an Armenian living in Iran, came to the United States. If there's one thing I will say, is that there's also a resiliency with the Armenian community that is so powerful. You see, Dr. Aga Khanian has become a school board member in the city of Burbank. You see Adrian, who was the highest-ranking Armenian-American elected official, representing close to 500,000 people, passing a statewide holiday on genocide commemoration, not honoring one genocide, but really commemorating all genocides and bringing a melting pot of a state together. So, and also passing the state's largest college savings program, or the nation's largest college savings program. So the Armenian community, the Armenian people are resilient people. They shouldn't have to be anymore, but they are. And so we are proud to have you as members of our community, but more than anything, we are so proud to celebrate, but today, we're in solidarity. So congrats again. With that, thank you. We will go to requests to address the board. We are going to public communications first. So these are... Yeah, these will be agenda items only. So I have one card. Are these all cards for this? No. Subject within... Okay, got it. So first, we've got a merry gang of principals that I'm going to introduce, and with the board's consent, I'm just going to invite all of them forward who would like to speak. Mr. Osman, Mr. Young, Ms. Almer, and Ms. Vineyard. And they are going to sing for us a lovely rendition of... Laura's like...
We're definitely not singing.
Laura's like, false.
Good evening, President Ferguson, members of the board, Dr. Paramo, colleagues, and our Burbank USD community. The five of us are here on behalf of our 11 elementary schools in celebration of today's UNESCO World Teacher Day, which honors teachers around the world for the valuable work they do to prepare students for tomorrow.
So World Teacher Day is celebrated on October 5th each year to commemorate UNESCO's 1966 establishment of rights, responsibilities, and expectations of teachers, which contributes to the professionalism and expertise that our teachers exemplify in their classrooms each and every day. The theme of World Teacher Day is "The Teachers We Need for the Education We Want." This theme speaks to the important role each of our teachers plays in the individual lives of our students and the contributions they make to each grade level, department, school, and our Burbank community as a whole.
Each day, we see how hard our teachers work to support their students and our schools. We see them arriving early and staying late, sharing great ideas and best practices, learning and collaborating with one another. We hear them differentiating their lessons based on the individual needs of students, pumping students up for a challenge, calming them down when they're anxious or frustrated, and truly enjoying the time they spend with their classes.
The job of an educator is hard, y'all, and we can't think of a more important time to honor those who are as good at their job as our Burbank teachers are. Preparing their work, reflecting on their lessons, learning new strategies and tools, and improving teaching practices. Although the title of this day identifies teachers, we know that all of the people who work at our schools teach and care for our students, yard supervisors, librarians, intervention specialists, instructional assistants, and other classified staff also provide meaningful support.
We know that praise of gratitude can surpass the power of gifts and treats, so we're not asking for anything tonight. We are just here to celebrate our teachers for all, everything they do and how well they do it. We are never surprised, but always impressed by the great work they do to support our students, our schools, and each other. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last card I have at this time, unless there are other items which, they're members of the public, which to weigh in on for... Oops, sorry. I have, so I have them checked for anything under...
Ms. Walmsley hasn't...
Okay, great. Sorry. Ms. Walmsley, come on forward. See, I called you for the flag loop, and now, no. Come on up. My apologies.
Good evening. I am speaking to you tonight about item 10B on your agenda. The survey you commissioned tells you that a facilities bond to maintain our schools is feasible if you carefully read and incorporate the findings into a well-planned, well-funded, and well-executed campaign. My first impression from the survey is that November of 2024 would be the best time to have this issue on the ballot. When I addressed you two weeks ago, I said that I was hopeful that you would amend your timeline to do just this. My other impression from the data that was collected in this effort is that you will need, this effort will be need to be managed by an independent, broad-based, community-driven campaign to succeed. I would hope that there would be outreach to all former school board members, Marsha Ramos, who chaired the 2013 campaign, the Board of Realtors, the Chamber of Commerce, service clubs, and the active, involved voting citizens in Burbank. I am supportive of a well-planned, well-funded, well-executed facilities bond initiative, and I am hopeful that the voting community will join me and approve such a measure. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the final card we have. Any further? Seeing none, we'll respond... I'm sorry, I called for cards this entire time, so... Where is it? Okay, so within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, that's correct. This is not, this is on agenda items, so we'll get to you at the second period. With that, we'll close public comment. Any further responses from board? First, Superintendent.
I would like to start by really praising our principals for recognizing the outstanding, talented teachers that we employ. It's pretty humbling to be Superintendent of a district with so many amazing teachers that go the extra mile all the time, and I just want to echo that praise and let all teachers know in Burbank Unified that we appreciate you, that we care about you, and thank you for coming up and recognizing them today. Ms. Walmsley, I want to have a very well-planned and well-executed bond measure, if that's how we decide to go. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Tabit.
Thank you, Mr....
Ferguson.
Fergason... No, I wanted to say it. Fergesonian.
Mr. Schlossman, you need to sit down at this moment. I've told you, this has been the same process for months, and you're making a show of this, so this is your first warning that you're disrupting the meeting at this moment in time. The instructions for the agenda items are on the agenda, they are printed on the agenda. I have a card here that you checked the wrong box. I'm sorry. Thank you. Ms. Tabit, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Are you interrupting again? Excellent. That is your second warning. Okay. Again, way to be an example for our kids. Go ahead, Ms. Tabit.
Thank you. I'd like to thank our staff and our superintendent, and the parents of all those students who came to visit us today. You're right, we need that every meeting. It's great, and it's great to see the students and how, you know, they're excited about their accomplishments, and I think that's really important, and I'm so glad we can honor them tonight. I hope we get to do more of that. Thank you to Mrs. Walmsley for coming out and sharing your thoughts with us. You were also very vital in the last bond measure, and I appreciate your thoughts, because you've, I think, both bond measures, you actively participated amongst many other things that you've done and worked for, for the district, for the common good of everybody. It's greatly appreciated, and when you come and speak, it's important, because people listen to you because you have their respect. So thank you. So, thank you for taking the time to come down and do that. I appreciate it. Gosh, two months into school, it seems, and there's a, yeah, and there's a lot going on. Please, if you're watching or you're here, check out the websites of not only the district, but all of our schools, because really fun, important things are happening this month. Lots of fundraising, lots of honoring. FSA has won their big gala this weekend honoring Judy Wilkie. They're great partners of ours and need our community's support, so they can continue doing those wonderful things for us. So, check those out. Community involvement in everything we do in the district is greatly important. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Spencer Kimcar.
Thank you, President Ferguson. So, I want to thank our parents and students who came out. That was wonderful, and congratulations. That's, it's truly amazing, and it was really exciting to see how many students, how many students got a perfect, the highest score you could get. I want to make sure I use the right terminology.
Right.
Dr. Anders. So, very cool. I also want to thank our principals for coming out to inform us that apparently it's UNESCO World Teacher Day. I had no idea. But that is very cool, too, and I appreciate their support for our, for our teaching and our, our teaching and learning staff. We didn't do board member reports, but I, so I have like, well, you know, like a little bit of stuff, which is, I just wanted to thank Ms. Vineyard and Ms. Farmer for organizing a great read-in at Washington Elementary last week, I think. I loved being in that school, and I found a new book to add to my children's library, which is called Enemy Pie. And I also want to recognize I saw several cabinet members, so Dr. Rachek was there, Dr. Knappett, Dr. Valdez, Dr. Kung, yes, you were there too, right? Yeah. And Assemblymember Laura Friedman. So, I just really want to recognize them for doing a great job of like welcoming in the community, welcoming in district staff. It's always a pleasure to be at Washington Elementary. We also had our academic committee earlier this week on Monday. I want to recognize our student board members, so Emma, who's with us tonight, and Peyton Johnson for asking some particularly thoughtful questions. We're going to talk about the academic later, and I can bring some of that feedback we got at that time, but I think of board member Tabit's doing, we had a demonstration from Mr. Carter on some amazing assistive technology that's available for all of our students. It's called Snap and Read, and we talked about how we're going to get the word out to students and parents, whether it's through PTA or kind of other modes, but it's very, it's very cool, and it's available for all students, whether they have, you know, special learning needs or not.
And it's good for everybody.
Yeah, it's very cool.
Even if you are a good reader, it'll just increase your capabilities to read fluently and.
Wonderful support. So, thank you.
Love that. And the committees are off. We'll go to Dr. Aga Khanian.
Thank you, President Ferguson. I do also want to echo my colleagues, you know, we had 90 students here with perfect scores. Well, we should also thank our teachers to make sure that those students did receive those, right? They're the reason why these students also receive those perfect scores. You know, I always say behind a good student is always a great teacher, too, right? So, thank you for our teachers, for all the hard work they do. I still, to this day, every time I go to, you know, to even pick up our son, I'm amazed the amount of work they do. But I think in today's world also, more than ever, with all the technology, AI and everything, we need more teachers. We need that human, you know, connection, you know? And I can tell you what's happening now with, and I bring up AI because, you know, I'm seeing a lot of our, at least some students in higher education, you know, the writing skills, you can type it in, and it will literally give you the answers. But I think one thing that can never replace, you know, something I can always replace in AI is that human connection, which are our teachers. And, you know, I come from education systems that teachers are some of the highest paid professions, like the Germanies of the world, which teachers are some of the highest paid professionals. But I do want to take this opportunity. I was not also aware that today was the UNESCO Teachers' Day. But I want to thank them for all they do because, you know, what amazes me is how our 11-year-old remembers all his teachers, keeps talking about them, how he misses them. And I think that speaks volume about who these teachers are. He can't even remember some of his friends, but he will, he will talk about his teachers and how he misses them. And that speaks volume about who our teachers are. These are individuals that, that really instill in our students the value of education, but also ultimately become someone they look up to. And I think in today's world, we need more teachers. So, thank you for all you do. I do also want to congratulate all the parents that their children received awards tonight. I know some of them couldn't make it tonight, but thank you. Thank you for, you know, supporting our schools, but also make sure you thank your child. It's not easy getting a perfect score. And I remember growing up, I would get these cards, and that would be kind of my way of going to my parents and saying, well, you know, I want that bike for Christmas. So, they were like, well, go get 10 of those cards. And I'm like, here they are, you know? But I saw the students proudly holding those certificates. So, parents, don't forget, those are not easy to earn, and it always amazes me when I see these young students, you know, who work so hard, and and they take this very seriously. I can tell you, you know, they really study hard. So, thank you, everyone, and thank you very much. And Ms. Wamsley, thank you very much for bringing this up. Yes, you are correct. We're going to need a well-funded, well-organized campaign. And I know you've been there before, and I'm sure we can count on you again when the time comes. I also want to take this opportunity to thank our friends at the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. Yeah, I know you were there. It was a great event. It was wonderful to see our community come together, not only the business community, but also the teachers, everyone, parents. And I want to get the recipe for that peanut butter jelly fusion, whatever that was from our culinary program. Yes, please get me the recipe for. But it was amazing showcasing our students and and how, you know, and some of our students are studying in culinary arts, some of our students who, some of them were also going to continue their education in different fields, but I just loved the vibe of the event. It was positive. Everyone was happy to see one another and, and, you know. And I want to also thank our board president and our superintendent. Great, great speeches getting up there and speaking. But for those of you who missed it, you can still continue supporting Burbank Arts and Education Foundation by going online and helping them. You know, this is the nonprofit entity that raises money, so your donations are tax write-offs. And more than ever, we need your help, you know, especially with what's happening with the budgets and the state. More than ever, we need your help. With that said, I also want to, you know, again, congratulate our new school board mem, award board members, hopefully one day school board member, you know? Yes, thank you, Ms. R. And, and that's it. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Dr. Aga Khanian. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. Let's see, to our amazing principals for coming down on the Thursday night at 8:00 to sing the praises of their phenomenal teachers. Thank you, and thank you for creating a space that your teachers want to come to every day to support our kids and to work collaboratively together. It wouldn't happen if you weren't there leading the way, so I'm appreciative for you, and I'm, as always, appreciative of our teachers. I did not know it was us appreciation, World Appreciation Day. Weird, that's exciting. So, thank you for coming down. I'm sure it means a lot to your staff. Ms. Wamsley, thank you. I hear you loud and clear. I think something, the thing that you said that spoke to me the most was talking about community-based support, and I couldn't agree with you more. It's a conversation that we've been having over and over and over again about how, if this does go forward, how we do this together as a Burbank community with all of the different groups that you spoke about in partnership with our city. I know that Dr. Paramo has already been having some really positive conversations, and I don't think any of us want to go forward with anything unless we're doing it together because it's not going to work. So, I, I think your message is a really important one, and I also think it's going to be, you know, not just you, but Mr. Applebaum and everyone who came to speak at the last meeting. We need people, we, we need the institutional memory. We need to know what worked and what didn't work. You know, I've been, I volunteered for two parcel taxes, but I wasn't involved in the bond. I have a lot to learn. So, we need to get all of the information, support, and knowledge that we can in order to make this successful. And I think the one thing that's been really heartening so far is how much community support we've heard so far, just about the idea, and that everybody wants to come to the table and collaborate, which is super exciting. So, I hope you'll continue to remind us and keep us on the right track because you've been through it, and so you know. So, I'm grateful to you for continuing to come down here, again, late on a Thursday night when you could be doing other things, but it really speaks to our community, and so I'm appreciative. Couple of quick things. Andre reminded me, this past weekend, we had the Second Annual Burbank Pride in the Park, which was an absolutely phenomenal celebratory, fun event. And one of the things that was so striking to me is that we had BUSD alum basically running the show. So, Andre and Everhuerta basically ran Pride this year. I mean, you can be like, no, but you did, but you did. So, it, what was so phenomenal is not only did we see young BUSD students coming and celebrating with their families, we saw alumni running this humongous, day-long, you know, lots of budget, lots of people, and running it like they were pros. And so, I got to come and help out and volunteer my time under the leadership of Andre and Ever. It was just a really wonderful day, and it showed the best part of who we are as Burbank. So, I want to give a shout out to Tracy Tab, who is the main organizer, and to everybody. It was a super fun day. I can't wait for next year. Also, a thank you to the state of schools. I was battling round two of COVID and was not there, which was a huge bummer, but heard really wonderful things and just continue to be grateful to all of the amazing organizations that support us. Boo, 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 boo. Just singing a little song, it's fine. And also just want to give another, another brief shout out to the amazing district staff who have been working their butts off to get our governance committees off the ground. It is an enormous undertaking, and enormous in a way that I, I don't think any of us knew when we talked about the idea. So, there's so much work that people don't see, so much work. And so, as we head into our second round of meetings, just want to acknowledge, and also IT, Rick and Andrew, who aren't here but are in the ether somewhere, just everybody really making it possible to bring our students and our community together to get input. So, thanks to everybody for that. And I think that's all I got.
All done? Okay, excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you to our public comment tonight. I will begin with Ms. Wamsley, of course. You know, I, I am really thrilled. One, I heard the, I heard this a few years ago, right? We need a well-organized, unified, all of it. I've heard it, and, and I, and I agree with it. But, but what I, what I'm really struggling with is, is that we are perpetually kicking the can down the road on revenue, and we are going to build cardboard palaces with these bond measures if we do not fund the programs behind the scenes. So, I am not at that place where I'm going to be supportive at this moment in time, and I'm really working towards it because I feel like my team wants to get there. And I understand that, but one, I think it's way soon with some of the financial situations we're encountering. Honestly, I, I am, we are all elected to make independent judgments on this, five independent judgments that, that set direction. My judgment at this moment in time is that we are not in that place. We'll see. We're going to go out and we're going to get data. We're going to ask questions. Nothing wrong with that. Do I think it's premature? You bet. But I'm going to, I'm going to explore this with everybody else, try and keep an open mind, but I cannot keep renovating campuses to cut the teachers, to cut the classified that are occupying them. And that's the reality. We also have demographer information that our enrollment may drop by as much as 25% in the next 10 years, quite literally renovating classrooms that may not be used. We've got bigger problems, and when we've tried to talk about housing, we've gotten pushback from some of the very names that you have spoken about. Mr. Applebaum was knocking on doors, right? Fighting the kind of innovation that this district is going to need to survive. So, I agree, and I welcome the conversation. We need one, but we need to think outside the box, and we need to be brave enough to do that if we're going to go for a bond, because the bond better introduce some answers, not just an additional timeline, an additional countdown clock that just perpetually gets kicked down the road. So, that's where I'm at. We have to get to a place with revenues. So, just like that coalition needs to come together for a one-time bond, we need to come together for ongoing revenues. And, and, and really, our business community is generous within their budget. We need them to be generous for our kids. That matters to me. We saw so many partners at the state of the schools show up. You know, it, it's also, I have to say, remarkable because Dr. Paramo's, this was his first state of the schools, this was my second state of the schools address, so that was, I was like, oof, been here a bit. And, you know, you look at the sponsors up on the wall, and, and there's like Sharon Cusco's name, right? Right alongside corporate giants. What does that tell you? You know what I mean? Not just that Sharon Cusco is awesome, because she is, but when they're giving at the same rate as one of our assistant soups, swish it up a bit, you know? Double down. I'm not saying that to be critical. I used to do corporate giving for a multi-billion dollar company. I used to do that. There's budgets for these things, and guess what? They're tax deductible. We need partnership to pay for our future, to finance the future for these kids and for these young people. I know people, you know, wince when I say it, but it's true. Without change, without some sort of innovation, without ongoing revenues, we will not recognize this district, and no matter the talent we have, we will not be able to attract and retain the future. So, I have always enjoyed engaging with you. You have always challenged me in the right moments and right back at you, but we've always been good at communicating. So, if we can work together, you and I, model that for people, because that's what this is all about, and really engage, you know, those folks who are aligned and agree with your paradigm, and allow me to, you know, bring folks on my side of the table, and let's really start talking a little bit. Everybody's got a side of this table right now, but I'm really concerned about these issues, and I would love to hear their answers to it, but more than anything, I'd like to earn their support for ongoing revenue because we need to get there. And if they're not going to be there, we have to acknowledge we're building things for programs we don't know are going to be there, and that is not something that I think voters want. They want guarantees. So, humbling, terrifying, all the things. That being said, State of the Schools was such a production. It took an incredible amount of work, so I really want to take a moment to thank Brenda Ederbeek, Jen Lur, oh, wait, Jen. Where I go, sorry. Yeah, excuse me, Jen. Just blanked. And, and all the different board members who came together to put on that event. One, yes, it was outside of Burbank. We will forgive, we will forget, but it was a wonderful night. It really was, where people came together. I want to thank our chamber partners. Our chamber partners were there in force and chamber members. It was like a chamber mixer. It was kind of great in that regard. Dr. Aga Khanian was in the back causing trouble and riffraff, no, just kidding, but it was the peanut butter sandwiches that did it books. So, you know, but I also want to thank members of the city council who were there, our mayor, our vice mayor, Konstantin Anthony, Nick Schultz, also Nikki Perez, councilwoman, was there, Zazet Mullins. Oh, Tamla was there. Excellent, yeah, yeah. Yes, and all the merry gang of elected officials, so including Laura Friedman, our assemblywoman, and, yes, Senator Portman, anybody else? And our, and our city clerk, Kimberly Clark. Oh, if I forgot that one. So, anyway, really profound. One, you could feel the change, there's a change in energy. One, I felt that it was very student-focused, which is the goal. That is the goal. We should be talking about student achievement, student success, and what we were talking about? Academics! So, I want to compliment Dr. Paramo, who So I want to compliment Dr. Pramo, who it's like, welcome to the superintendency. Also deliver this day of the schools address. You know, and, and I think we spoke basically once on it. And, and our message, I think, was again, very aligned. It is about values. And, and this community, education and investment in our young people is a value of this community. So we have now an educator at the helm and an incredible team that we've seen just shine in the short weeks that we've had, you know? And they're driving. So I'm really excited to see all that's ahead. I know this community is excited because that's all that was there was a bunch of buzz and excitement. So community is with y'all. Keep doing the work, keep living that mission, keep fighting, delivering to the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. Thank you for your partnership once again. We do have a MOU with them that we have, I don't know when that's coming before the board, but I want to get that done. If we can get that done sooner rather than later, that would identify them as our primary foundation partner. I think it's just time, they're, they're going out of their way to do this. It will allow us to secure grants and other things like that that could be so useful to teachers in the classroom and classified employees in the classrooms today. So I want to just move that. They've done a great job and I think they've met that mark.
Also as a director of another foundation, when you centralize it, it really streamlines the donations. When people know where to go, where to donate. And it does matter when it comes to grants. When you apply for big grants, the first question they ask you is how much money you have, what is on your board? And what percentage of actually also people in the district from employees also donate to the foundations? And that's another conversation that hopefully we can start talking about. You know, I always tell people five dollars a month, you can change someone's life, right? I don't know if we have that kind of mechanism yet for direct deductions. Okay. But again, it's important and I think it's about time that we do that and we can streamline this. Because people always ask me, where do I go to give money? I said, well, there you go.
There you go. Well, and again, also to our culinary arts, Ms. Macias at Burrows. I know a number of our principals, yeah, the, the corner, I mean, everybody was commenting on the food, which was kind of fantastic. It was also, I believe the, the joke was made that it was actually made in ovens that were donated by the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. So I kind of love that too. But also to our principals, our principals were a part of the program. It's really amazing how they took five minutes and they really stuck within that five minutes to tell really compelling and dynamic stories. Just really well done. So to everybody who made this a success, everybody who helped tell this story, which is so complicated to get done right, they did it. So just well done, everybody. And to my board colleagues who were there, who didn't, we, we missed you. But you know, to our board colleagues that were there, we were raging. We were having a good time and, and it was great. So thanks again to our city partners and to our business partners. This is a whole new day in Burbank Unified and we're enjoying and living every day of it. So with that, we will move on. We are, is, thank you. I'm getting, I'm like, now we go back to Mr. Anders. Dr. Anders, excuse me. I didn't mean to demote you or do your education. It's like a bad, bad thing.
While we get the presentation up, I want to recognize Dr., or excuse me, President Ferguson, members of the board, Superintendent Paramo, BUSD staff and, and community. I'll be presenting some information tonight on our academic performance, school performance from last year. The CASP results are preliminary initial results. So these aren't the published final results from the state. But we can share these with the school board as, as planning numbers. Also want to recognize our principals who came out tonight to support the teachers, but also the, the perfect score students. They worked just as hard to recognize all those students who are showing growth and continuing to improve year after year. And it was nice to see them here to support those students as well. So this first slide, I just want to highlight how we, the protocol that we use within our district or how we like to look at data at our school sites. So we're looking at district data, but our schools are always looking at, at data locally. We use multiple measures. So you'll see iReady data tonight. That's one of our local assessments, not, we don't just rely on the state assessments. We also look at the learning conditions, the students we're learning in. We reflect on some of the reasons why we see some of the possible outcomes. And then we also look at how we can respond to the data and to optimize results going forward. So it's kind of a protocol to really think about the conditions and the environment in which our students were learning to help us understand and explain the data, but also how to support our students in improving. With that, I want to show a screenshot of a tool that each of our sites receives and that we create as a district for all of our schools. And this is not manipulable, it's just a screenshot. But there's a tool that we provide our, our, our sites that allows them to manipulate the data any way that they want using different demographics, different criteria, like our local assessments. They can use grades, a lot of different ways they can filter and look. And then these charts within this dashboard will adjust accordingly if they're looking at specific groups of students. So it really helps them visualize the data, number one. But two, it really helps drive conversations with our teachers and staff about what they're seeing in the data, how we can support individual, specific groups of students. And even drill down to specific students that they want to look at by name to see if we filter by all these criteria, we can look at just maybe three or four kids that meet all these criteria. And they're the ones we want to focus some attention to. So it's a really cool tool and it's one of the ways we look at data at our school sites. So these are our preliminary results from the CASP assessment. This is district wide. And what I've done here is replicated what you will see on the public dashboard that will be released in December. And we are just shy of 60% of our students meeting or exceeding the standard in English language arts. And then 45.89% in math. If we look at last year, we held pretty consistent with where we were, were in those percentages. So again, an increase of about 1% from last year in English language arts. And then we held pretty consistent with math from last year. Just want to show that this was the actual report, public reporting that was on the dash, on the California dashboard. And so our predictions or our preliminary results were really quite spot on to what's going to be published. So I feel confident that the numbers I'm sharing tonight are going to be very accurate to what will be published in December. I'm also including another slide pre pandemic, because that's a question that comes up a lot. The test was different before the pandemic. It's been shortened, so it is slightly different in that sense. But the blueprint was, was adjusted to be able to be reported the same way. And so you can see that pre pandemic, our numbers have held pretty consistent in English language arts, just the small decline. But we've actually grown in math coming out of the pandemic, which is pretty remarkable. So now we're going to look at some elementary data. We're going to look at math first. So math is one of the highlights of what we looked at. So we did look at these slides during the Monday's governance meeting in a lot of detail. So I am going to move through some of these slides pretty quickly tonight because we were able to do a lot of detail in that meeting. But the first set of slides is elementary math. This is a focus for us. We're, we're very focused on math as a district, not just at elementary, but middle school and high school. And so I'm, I'm prioritizing math when we look at these slides. And so what you're seeing here is the bands of performance for students. The first, and I'll do this for the first slide, but then it'll be the same in subsequent slides. Students in the grade did not meet standard. So that's a percentage of students in those grades. The peach or tan is the nearly met standard. So they're very close or approaching. The green is, has met the standard. And then the blue is exceeded the standard and in some ways above grade level, sort of with, with how they're performing. And obviously our kids that we saw tonight were in the blue at the very edge of that. And so you can see third, fourth and fifth in how we performed again in math. This is iReady, which is our local assessment. And what this indicates is the growth from beginning of the year to end of year. And so quite a bit of growth. This is more detailed and it looks specifically by grade level. So where that last slide was all grades, this looks specifically at each grade level. And you can see that there's tremendous growth, especially in the, the primary grades. Starts to, to slow down a little bit in grades four and five as we, as we progress. But again, credit to our teachers that we discussed already tonight of all the learning that occurs throughout, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. I skipped a slide because this is more, this is more vital to the conversation. And this is a question that comes up, or has come up in previous presentations, is how we compare nationally. And so in math, you can see the first column, we're looking at our norm of pre pandemic. So they, they look at that. And then the second column is current national percentages. And then we're the third column. So we are performing well above the current national percentages in math. And we're just slightly behind national averages in math pre pandemic. But again, our, our overall percentage grew post pandemic for our district. So now we're switching to ELA, English Language Arts slides. And so again, just like I stated earlier, these are the bands of performance, not just proficient or not. You can see our fourth grade did outstanding this year. That was really a highlight in all of the data is that we had a really strong showing from our fourth grade students. Growth from fall to spring, but the next slide goes in more detail to look at each grade level. And then this is how we compare nationally. By grade level, again, same, same sequence, first being pre pandemic, second column being current. And then the third column being our current percentages. And so you see with English language arts, we're outperforming the nation both pre pandemic and post pandemic. So we're switching gears now to middle school. Again, we're going to start with math and these are our performance bands with math at middle school. One of the questions that came out of the governance committee was specifically about our sixth grade when it comes to math and us seeing a dip in the percentage of students proficient. I did look at this group longitudinally, which means I looked at the same cohort, our current sixth graders and how they performed the year before. Excuse me, actually, this would be our last year's sixth graders and how they performed, performed the year before as fifth graders. And I saw a decline of about 10% in proficiency. So, so there was quite a bit of decline from fifth grade to sixth grade. I looked, it's really hard to see that nationally because, or to compare to the state because they haven't released other schools or the state numbers for this year. And if I go back two or more years, then we're looking at assessments that occurred distance learning and they're not very accurate. So it's still not, I'm not able to predict or analyze compared to the state. But I did want to point that out because that was a really good question that came out of our governance. Yeah.
I thought this question was great from Principal Almer from Emerson. And one of the things that she mentioned, which was why it was so concerning to her, was that the sixth grade standards and the fifth grade standards are not terribly different. So if you only look at the same, this last year's fifth grade and sixth grade, it goes from basically 60% proficient to 40% proficient. And what Dr. Andrews is saying is like, well, but if you looked at those same kids, that same cohort, it still dropped to 10%, which is like very concerning to me. Especially considering what it's Almer said that was like, it's, they, they should be able to do that on grade level work. So I'd love to, I, I know that we're going to get kind of deeper clicks into domains, right? And so maybe that's going to help us understand where those, where those bricks are.
Correct. So domain data or claim data, which is supposed to come out this October, two districts that won't be publicly released until December, allows us to look at math or English language outs, language arts, for example, but at specific parts of that subject. So just as an example, with English language arts, you can look at phonetic awareness versus informational text or comprehension. And then it helps us get a little more prescriptive about where do our kids need to show some more growth? So glad you brought that up.
Well, and, and I, I think this is something we, let's get on the board agenda as well, just as we're tracking it. You know, I, I like, I, I love the depth that you're able to go into committee on this. But now we've seen this, we now identified this as an issue to track. So if, if, if that's all right with you too, just that we identify the right moments to surface this and bring this to, to the board, that would be, I think, important. So we can educate the community.
I'm sure you can still get the deep dive from Dr. Andrews. I think that's a great idea. I think maybe it's once we've gotten the domain or the claim data back in October, or it is October. But someday, after you've been able to kind of crunch the numbers to really kind of dig into, what do we think is creating that difference? Oh, Ms. Cuseo has an idea.
Well, pre pandemic, this was also an issue. And when we really looked at it, it was a statewide issue. So it was not just Burbank and it really spoke to the test itself. And so that was what the outcome was at that point. So this is now a shortened test, so we don't know if it's going to have the same correlation, but that was the result last time. So we had, always had high proficiency rates in fifth grade, had a dip in sixth grade, but we were not alone. And it really said more about the test than about instruction.
I, I think where I, where I want the timeline to inform is we've got LCAP coming up, right? So this is the year for new spending priorities. And, and that's, you know, we've got a few things we, and we'll talk about it as soon as you're done with your report. A, a meeting we've had today that was really successful. You know, there are new priorities that are going to kind of help us evolve as a district, help us address some of these core issues. So that's, that's why I'm just kind of triggering that because we are coming to that season and budget season is just that time. So thank you, Dr. Andrews, for putting up with me today.
No worries. And trending wise, we do lose a little bit of proficiency as kids progress, but that's a unique spot. And what we also find is when we're transitioning fifth to sixth, eighth to ninth in our local data, that it's the same sort of phenomenon when you're transitioning. So there's a couple of things that work there. And we've been doing specifically work in math to, to look at these types of transitions and supporting our kids through that.
And do we do iReady in sixth grade that we could look at whether that same thing happens in sixth grade? Okay, great, thanks.
We don't do end of year, but we, we can find, we can find some data. Yeah, we can, we can find some data that correlates. So now we're looking at English language arts and we've always performed very well in English language arts as a district compared to the state other schools or comparable schools. And you see that data here with our middle school students. So we're going to jump into secondary data because we're going to look at high school now. And when we look at, I'm going to be looking at middle school and high school. We're going to be looking at grade distributions. The first slide is really just kind of there as a baseline to see, it's pretty typical, I guess, of, of what you would see for grade distributions. But I wanted you to be able to see this slide before we look at some of our subgroups. So this is first semester math, second semester math. You see the, the trend for both semesters and as far as grade distribution with our, all of our students and general education students. And then here's English language arts, grade distributions. 10th grade is, is a challenging year for students. It's when the rigor cranks up quite a bit. But a reason I wanted to only included, I included those so you'd have a baseline when you went to look at our special ed grade distribution. And this is a cause of, of call, call to action for our district to support our special ed students in all of their classes, specifically in math and then also in English language arts. So this is data we're very aware of and we're working hard to address. Want to be transparent because it's been a request of the board to look specifically at our special ed population, special education population students, to monitor them and make sure we're supporting them.
I jumped, you know, I was there. So I wanted to thank you for the transparency here because I think half of this gets worse when we don't acknowledge what parents feel at times, right? So we're, we're seeing this and for folks at home, you were seeing this gap, right? And our educational professionals here, let me just tell you, all look very concerned, very aligned. So I do want to see how we break this out. I do want to see how we, what, what steps we're outlining now a little bit more. It sounds like you guys are, you know, you're in that process already. But I think when we see this slide, and it's such a visual, and thank you for that, we now need to communicate with parents. So, and, and Dr. Pramo is a major fan of communication, I can tell. But this is going to be, we, this is, we need to address this as if it were any other crisis. Because it is in terms of student achievement. These, this population coming back from the pandemic hasn't fully recovered. And, and, and they need that from us. So, and, and they have much more demanding needs, right? And, and they need more resources, they need more support. We get that. But again, budget time is coming and we, we need to make sure that we can guarantee what the state constitution provides, which is fair and equitable education for all students. So thank you for, thank you for, again, that transparency. Because again, you don't have to do that slide. And, and that's what's important about. And and that's what's important about this. So thank you, Dr. Andrews. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, on that though, and correct me if I'm misreading the data here. But it looks like our special education students have about the same, if not lower, F and D rates than our general, than our general population, or I guess the total, right? So.
That's nationwide as well, you know, so it correlates because there's less likelihood to fail.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
That's, so that's the only thing that that is called out.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I think it, what's interesting about is it's like, why are there, why, why are they getting the same numbers of Ds and Fs? Is it because the expectations are lower? Or is this a cause for celebration? And I don't actually know the answer to that, right?
Yeah. And the expectations would be different, you know, they not not necessarily lower, it's for their their skill set, right? It's their skill level, their, it's their ability. So I I I want to be careful in that regard, but and really focus on just again, articulating for parents who may not look at a chart in the same way, they'll see the visual of it. But I I think there's a lot of different stories that could told.
I'm going to move to English learners, another population that has been important, especially in in the last year or two, if we've seen a lot of new incoming students that are part of this demographic. So we're looking at math. Again, calling out some areas of growth or some some call for concern or a call to action for us to be able to support our students that are coming to us as English learners and being able to perform in in math. Specifically though, for this one, I did not use percentages because sometimes we are dealing with small populations and so a small number of kids could skew the data significantly. But you know, we're, we're already having conversations about our seventh, seventh grade students from last year and how we're supporting them in eighth grade when it comes to math, things like of those nature.
So with ELD students, what area do you find to be most challenging with which subject usually? Is there any specifics on it?
Well, what I wanted to point out is the English numbers look or the distribution for English looks better, but part, that's partly in due because those students are pulled out of their normal general ed English class to get specialized support in English language development. But they are still going to be mainstreamed and get and working alongside all of the other students in the math classes. So it's critical that we give them support and English language support in those gen ed classrooms where they're getting some of that support in English because of how we are able to program. Does that sort of answer your question?
Dr. Weisberg.
I just had a quick question in regards to our English learners and math. Do we, I don't think that there's, or I doubt there's a way to measure this. But I wonder how much English proficiency impacts math scores for our English learners. I was just reading an article about this that, you know, when you're doing math that that are word problems, the student may be fully capable of doing the math, but can't read the English. And so do we have any sense of the impact that makes on math scores?
Open it up to anybody else I know.
I recognize that this is like a unbelievably specific, I, and it, it's my fault for reading the article and them being like, wait a minute, but I imagine there's some impact. I don't know how we measure that at all.
I don't know that we have a metric. What I would say though, is that we've done a lot of workshops with our teachers about working with our our teachers to make sure that when they're assessing and looking for content specific knowledge and not letting language be a barrier in how they're assessing students. So when we're looking at grades specifically, it's about can, are they showing mastery or are they showing that they're on grade level with the standards and making sure that our assessments aren't being problematic in that English language transition, especially when it comes to math.
Well, and I think we can control that when it's local and when it's grade assessments, but when you get to like the testing, I wonder if there's any, I would doubt there's any thought given to that when we're, when we're thinking about standardized testing, which is frustrating. So I'm, I'm happy to hear you talk about the way, and I would assume that the teachers would be adjusting for for that.
One of the things that the state has done that's been the positive thing is that for our students that are newcomers within the last year, new to the country, they they are able, they're not have, they don't have to participate in the state testing. Which to me is is humane because if you've just arrived in a new country and there's a lot on your plate, let alone trying to perform on a state assessment.
Just, just for clarification.
Hold on a second. It was Dr. Arkanian, then we'll go to you.
And thank you, Dr. Weisberg. That was actually my question, but I can, so as a former ELD student who came here in 12th grade, where I was mathematically way superior, the problem, the questions that involved English were difficult. So because the translation was not, you know, so, so, so that becomes a challenge. That was one area. I can do all the, I mean, that's stuff I could have done in my sleep. Only the word problems is the area that had difficulty with. And I don't know how we're addressing that. And that was my question origin. I know she worded it much more elegantly. But but that is a concern of mine because some of the students, especially with some countries they come from, some of the math levels that they've already participated is far superior in terms of the levels of what we offer here. But that becomes a challenge. And I don't even want to get into dual immersion because correct me if I'm wrong, they also do math and stuff in different languages, right? Not on the end of assessment, right? Okay, just for clarification.
But yes, they do math in. No, but on the elementary level they do.
So just for clarification too, because data is not just data, data can be utilized and shown in multiple ways and it could have different meanings. So Dr. Arkanian was talking about the ELD and and even even sped. But ELD for sure, our English ELD learners are in a separate program for their English classes for ELD, but not for math. In math, they're in gen ed classes. So they may or may not be getting some sedai strategies or whatever that might help them.
They would be getting.
They should be.
Yeah, they would be getting sedai strategies, they're just not.
It's not a specialized group like ELD, like their English classes. And the, and the, and sped grades. Some of these kids who are, would be in sped classes could be in gen ed math or English as well, depending on their learning disability or whatever level they're at too. So is that, do these grades reflect that?
Correct.
Or they, okay.
These grades would reflect any student that's that's in the special ed program, whether or not they're in a basic classroom or fundamental classroom or in a gen ed classroom, just receiving collaborative support.
So any student with an IEP essentially?
Exactly.
An IEP, not a 504 necessarily. Okay.
If I, I could just say one thing in, I think it's important when we're looking at the data to understand a little bit of the context. You know, we put an LCAP plan together, which really services our EL kits, right? That's our major targeted subgroup. And we get to update that plan every three years, right? But if you look at the data over the last three years, there have been significant changes to this group. There are significantly more kids coming to us that are newcomers and English language learners, or our population size for this group has gotten larger and so has the diversity. So we saw a huge increase in our Russian population, Ukrainian population, which is not a surprise. But our LCAP plan needs, we need to go back to that LCAP plan and address this new dynamic. So let me give you an example. We have a language that says that there is ELD aid support for language classes. And that's great. That's, that's a good thing. It's important. We don't have specific language that says that they get that same level of support in their science class or their social studies class. And so we need to look at that and see whether or not that's an area we need to look at. And and I'm sure teachers would love that support. And so that's fine, let's have that conversation. But I think that what's more important is that we need to also provide training and professional development because while Dr. Paramo might have a valid credential and I learned all these strategies to teach these, this population of kids because I have clad or be clad, I might have not have done that for years. That might not have been part of my teaching assignment for 10 or 15 years. And now you're asking me to work with this group. So I have my credential that allows me to do that. But it would be great if I had some professional development to hone my strategies and to get me back into the game with, you know, learning how to differentiate for this group in a very meaningful way because there are going to be a lot of levels.
Well, and I think, Dr. Paramo, that speaks to the conversation we've been having about really focusing on differentiated instruction for and providing that kind of professional development, which I know we do a lot, but you know, we talk a lot about like the DEI professional development. To me, differentiated instruction is authentic DEI work. So especially with the growing immigrant population, making our teachers feel as supported as possible, I think is clearly going to be more important than ever. I think that was, I lost the rest of it. But I I think to your point, it can't just be about the the needs, the way we meet the needs of the student is also by meeting the needs of our teachers.
I also, I also want us to also be understanding, but also start really addressing also the different educational systems that some of these DEI students come from. It's very different depending on the country you're from. And I've dealt with this over years. Certain countries, education system, it's very, you know, based on memorization, very British, you know, very heavy emphasis on mathematics. Where the parents are very well educated versus in the area and they will complain about, you know, well, you're not teaching the level our our students should be at. And I think that creates sometimes misunderstanding. And I think that's an area also we need to be sensitive about. Because again, I can use myself again as an example, came from a very strict French and British education system. Heavy emphasis on memorization, heavy emphasis on essay writings, heavy emphasis on memorization and mathematics. So when I came here, my parents were like, well, you don't have to worry about this math class you took this years ago. But then some of the issues earlier came problematic when it comes to the language understanding. Because even the English that you've learned in some of these countries is different. It's British English versus American English. You know, those things do make differences, but I hope at one point we need to also address that. When it comes to parents, to explain to them how the system works, because I will have, I will have my own mother complaining saying, well, I don't know the system, but you know, how do I get to learn the system? And language was a big barrier for, even though she was a teacher herself, because she knew the system before. Because ultimately, you know, you want to make sure that your child, you know, understands the system as well as you do. And I think it's important to parents too, because I've also had cases where students will explain to them the information the, the way they preferred because they didn't speak the language. Family members saying, well, we didn't know this was a suspension note or something like that, because the student spoke better English than the parents did. And sometimes parents are embarrassed to talk about these issues. But I think coming from different systems and that's something we also need to look at. But also there's advantage for us because some of these students coming from these systems are far superior in certain areas, you know, when it comes to education. But maybe English becomes an issue to them ultimately. And I think if we can find those commonality and build, build bridges, I think it would help all of our students and family members as well.
And teachers, of course. Fundamentally, we are, and and I, and I'm not saying this isn't to to insinuate there has been a lack of progress. We're talking about our ELD population and we're talking about math, we're talking about sped, our sped population. These are the populations and 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 the issue areas that we've all struggled at different times with, but we've also seen great progress. Math, I think, is a success story in so many different ways. And I, and and again, the instructors, everybody's doing that work. So but the problem evolves as the test evolves. And so again, what I love again, and and I think this has been said, is we're having conversations about this again at the school board meeting, right? These are actual, everybody jumped in on this conversation. When was the last time that occurred? Really, truly on 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 the academic focus. So again, thank you.
Yeah. And to Dr. Paramo's point and Dr. Dr. Arkanian, ELD has looked different 10 years ago when we were supporting primarily Spanish speaking students. And now we're, we're helping and supporting students with speak Russian or Armenian. High school credit and A through G data. So this has been another, just like President Ferguson was highlighting some of the areas that we're paying close attention to monitoring, looking to improve show growth. A through G is one of those areas. And so we've included data on our courses that we are high monitoring, looking at, our sites are monitoring and looking at specifically, specifically because these are, these are areas where kids have to do either credit recovery, grade improvement. There are barriers sometimes for students to stay on track to either graduate or to be A through G. And so specifically, we're showing some of the data that we look at in the fall and in the spring to plan credit recovery options, grade improvement options, but also have conversations with our sites about what's happening in these certain courses that we can support our teachers and students. And so I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail other to point out that when there's an S, this was a great question from one of our students during the guided governance committee, is the S after a course indicates that that is a sedai course. So that that is only ELD students, English language learner students that are in that specific course. And so sometimes you'll see by, like, for example, on this slide, biology shows twice. So in some ways, those doubles, those numbers will increase when you combine those two. But wanted to specifically pull out or tease out our sedai students in in those sections. And so this is fall. I would like to try to go through all the slides because we got a few and then we can get into some details. This is spring, same, these are our our fail numbers. This is fall for Ds. And why we're looking specifically at Ds is because, you know, that's close to failing, but also that's a criteria for A through G is to be C or better. So we're looking not just at the kids who failed, but also our, our kids who will receive a D in these courses. And then here's our spring A through G, again, courses that we're looking at with Ds. Specifically, I'm looking only at A through G courses. There are some other courses that we offer, but this is a priority for us. So we're looking at those. And those are the ones we prioritize for credit recovery, grade improvement. There was a question that came out of the guidance, governance committee, I keep saying guidance, sorry. Looking at, asking about how how the numbers look in comparison between the two high schools. So I wanted to to respond to that and share some data. When it comes to the number of Ds in these specific courses, it's very similar at both schools. So so Burbank High and Burrows, the D data is almost, almost identical or parallel. When it comes to fails, there is some discrepancy, but all the, all the courses on this list are the same courses at each school. Where there's some differences is in the first column of those 10, the highest 10 courses is where the sites differ. One site may have some more in those 10, but they're all the same 10, just depending on where they're at in that order as far as our priority courses that we're responding to. What I looked a little further to discover that was really based off enrollment. So when, if I were to represent this differently as percentages, maybe it would be the same as both schools, but the fact that one's high school had more enrollment in a specific course meant they're going to have more Ds and more Fs.
Quick question. What is art structure?
Art structure is an elective, but it counts as A through G. So just a little context to that, those numbers from working at a high school is when we have students with multiple Ds or multiple Fs, which happens quite, quite commonly, we prioritize with them the courses that they are able to recover or make up another credit. So sometimes a course like that falls on the shortlist of the courses, courses that they're prioritizing or working towards because they can always take another elective to fulfill that requirement. Whereas English nine, you have to pass English nine. So I don't want it to be a knock against that specific course, but some, but sometimes kids are getting counseled to put their energy into other courses that are harder to make up.
A quick question. So the numbers that we're looking at are how many kiddos? So if we're looking at like 83 kids who failed art structure one. How many kids took the class? You know what I mean? Like out of how many kids? I think that's, that's helpful because it, it's a big number. But how big? And then I just wonder, I mean, and this is a little bit of conjecture, but like to what are we, the art structure one, I think that makes perfect sense. It's, it's helpful information contextually to understand why art structure one is up there. But when we're looking at like English 10, geometry, biology, any thoughts as to why those are so high up beyond being complicated and difficult classes, which they are?
High enrollments. High enrollments. Since you asked, one of the things I wanted to point out is guess what's not at the top that always has been at the top? Algebra. So that's a big win. And anytime you're going to take a course and really move those numbers, you're going to have other courses that have to take its spot. So that's part of that. But even when we looked at like our performance data or the grade distributions, you can see 10th grade, the rigor cranks up. So when you're looking at English 10 and geometry, which were some of the courses that show up, that's, that's part of the reason.
I noticed that there are not any APs on the spring list. Is that, are students counseled to switch courses if they are failing an AP in the first semester? Or are they just doing that great with intervention at our high schools?
She may want to respond. I think.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There's not.
So these are really great questions. And you know, each school and counseling approach is going to approach that a little bit differently with their student population based on goals and, and needs and next steps. But that definitely can be an option to shift gears at the semester. It's a natural time to do so. And I also want to highlight that we share this data because we share the board's commitment for accountability and for growth over time. And so some of the really impressive improvements that we've seen in areas like algebra, which nationwide, statewide tend to have just astronomically high fail rates as a gatekeeping course. We've seen really impressive growth. And we've learned some things about how to produce that and replicate that growth in other content areas. So as we're looking at these grade distributions, I just want us to keep that in mind that we do so with full commitment alongside the board to continue to show growth in this area as we have in algebra in other areas.
I think it could be really exciting too, because I know it's, it's, it's easy to get very like narrow focused and look at this and just focus on all the things that look scary. But there have been enormous amount of successes. So I think it would be really exciting and I, assuming we're attributing a lot of maybe the math collaborative to this fantastic development in algebra. So it'd be really wonderful to hear at some point, like what are those takeaways? What are those really interesting things that we've learned that we're now going to apply? Cause I, I think we do, we focus on the sort of the fails and the Ds, but when do we get to focus on the positive discoveries that have been made? Because it really is huge growth and really important to focus on. And again, not to cover up the challenges we have, but I think we need to give some equal time also to some very real successes. I mean, just in the couple of years that I've been on the board, it's been very clear to see the uptick in math because of the sort of innovative approaches that we've been taking. And I think that deserves airtime as well. So that, you know, again, because it's very easy to get bogged down in the negative and we shouldn't ignore it. But we do also need to focus on the areas in which we've, we've had some really positive growth.
We really have. And additionally, in, I know Dr. Paramo who shared with me and Ms. Cuseo in, in algebra and looking at how we're coding. So sometimes when you look at A to G completion, you have to look in your system and how you're uploading to Calpads and how you're coding your courses and making sure that things are, we're speaking the same language. And so there's, it's, A to G is really a multi-faceted measure that will require a multi-pronged approach to continue to see it raise over time. And I think it's, it's exciting to look at this data because I think we have a real opportunity to accelerate some growth and work on some things together, moving forward and, and continue to create the kind of growth we've seen in the past.
You know, I, I will also kind of give a shout out because I think Dr. Andrews has been a big part of telling this story. Because as you said, it, it is how it gets categorized. It is how we program and, and how we, how we, how we basically collect data. What data we collect tells the story. So thank you for your work on that because again, now we are now getting to a point where that can be really utilized to expedite that growth. And I said it before and echoing Dr. Weisberg again, we have made significant strides. There is no doubt about that. But this is a room that is always going to focus on the kids that we're leaving behind or that we may be, right? Or that may be struggling. As well we should. That's, that's why everybody earns the big bucks here. So having said that, at least on the board. So it is a focus area, but everybody is delivering for these kiddos and, and these young people. They are delivering. So this is not a, a difference in values as I think it has been in moments. This is an absolute focus and attention and, and rather linear focus on this. So with that, Dr. Arkanian and then Ms. Ponsor Campcar.
Thank you. And I apologize, you know, I've said it before, I love data. I'm a data guy. So I'm just curious with the algebra. And all credit to our wonderful programs, teachers and everything. But I'm also curious what percentage of that has to do with also going back to my point of some of these students coming from ELD students and some others coming from countries with such a heavy emphasis on mathematics. And I don't know if you have that information, but I wonder if that's part of the reason too, that this is happening.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have that exactly to show you right now, but it's good to hear your questions and what you're thinking because we can display data in all sorts of ways and disaggregate data in all sorts of ways. And so the way we represent it in the future, moving forward can focus around our areas, our common goals.
I mean, I would, I just one point again, I would love to see that. Because again, personal experience, heavy emphasis on mathematics. But then I was told that I would fail at other areas where I was contributing so much to some of the areas, mathematics being one of the most challenging areas when I was in school. But I was the person who increased the numbers, yet I was told I can't get this and that because I don't speak English well, you know, so.
Well, and I do think Ms. Ponsor Campcar and Ms. Tabit are focusing on this and, and are really developing more of a comprehensive report back to the board. So I want to give them who are spending the time on this, that's the whole point of these governance committees. So it's not just to occupy a bunch of staff time. It is to make sure that the time that's being used really helps them as the people who have spent time on this organize the, the conversations better. So that we aren't as, I mean, even look at this agenda item, it's fantastic, we're talking, right? But this is so nebulous and, and we're trying to now bring it back together to give concrete direction, concrete feedback. So that's where I do want to defer, but I, I think Ms. Ponsor Campcar and Ms. Tabit are obviously listening up and, and will, that'll inform their approach. So Ms. Ponsor Campcar.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that. President Ferguson, I, I'm really excited about this report. I know there's a lot in here. And I think it's, you know, we get data, like very high stakes data once a year essentially that I think it's really important for us, even if we do review it in academic affairs, that we review it as a board, right? I'm just, I had a question about, oh, you mentioned Dr. Andrews in governance, I think, that English one and, and, or sorry, algebra one and English nine have traditionally been like a gatekeeper for A to G completion, just generally speaking. I think because I'm the newest on the board, I, I have heard the anecdotal evidence, I think, of this algebra nine. Or sorry, why do I keep saying it? Algebra one increase in proficiency, but I would love to kind of see how that has tracked year over year. Just our, our passing grades in algebra one. And then like, how does that look against some of these other courses? Because I make up that there, like we've talked about that a number of the 10th grade courses may also be like real inflection points for students because those are harder to make up. So I think one thing that would come out later would be some of this historical data. Cause I think I don't have the right context for this to know if they're like, are, are these good numbers? Are they bad numbers? And I, I think A to G is super important. I think there's a lot of things that go into it. I sent an email to staff today referring to my hair being on fire over this. So I know there's a lot of good reasons that we're where we are. And then some that I think there's, as you mentioned, Dr. Young, a big opportunity for us here to make sure that we're, you know, as a parent, as I'm sending my kid to school, I would expect that they would graduate college ready. And that's to me what A to G is supposed to say. So I think there's probably a lot of things that go into this, this last number in terms of what our projected A to G rate. But I imagine that a lot of that starts with algebra one, English nine, got it right the last time.
Yeah. Dr. Arkanian, I can't specifically respond to your question about English language learners in algebra. But I can tell you is that our last grade distribution in the spring, that our special ed students outperformed our general ed students in algebra, which is outstanding. The other thing to your point is that was actually the work I was doing all day today. So we were meeting with our math collaborative and bringing in our middle school leadership into that fold and specifically focusing on math eight, just like we were saying earlier about that transition from when they go from middle school to high school and supporting and making sure that we are vertically aligned for our students to be successful. And the reason why algebra and English nine are such important indicators is that they predict that performance in geometry and algebra two, and they project that performance in English 10 and English 11. And so part of the conversation we can do as a district is not just talk about A through G as a high school thing, but a whole district thing.
And I'll just, just add that algebra, for instance, is also very important for courses like chemistry. And so everything is interconnected. And so that's all part of the multi-dimensional, multifaceted look at A to G. And for our community, a reminder that A through G are a list of requirements for, to, for admission to UC or CSU, meaning item A requires so many years of, I don't remember if it's English or math. Item B is either, you know, math or foreign language or, you know, things like that. Do you, Madam Weisberg, do you know what A through G actually are?
Heck, no.
I was about to be really impressed.
No. I could make it up.
And we look at grade distributions because again, D for diploma, C or higher for college.
What I wanted to bring up too, and this speaks to Dr. Andrews' point about it being a district wide thing is that, and this is something I learned from Dr. Paramo before the meeting, that some districts make A through G graduation requirements. We do not. So I, I don't want us to fall into the trap of making A through G, the litmus test by which we measure all success in the district. I think that's, it's just, it's a, we don't want to do that because that's not actually how we're measuring success as far as the ability to graduate from BUSD. So I think it's just an important distinction for people who are listening. It doesn't mean we're less rigorous. It just means that we have created a different set of criteria. Obviously, A through G plays a huge part of that, but it is more connected to what you said, UC, CSU, than it is to necessarily like you have to fulfill A through G in order to walk out of. So I just think it's important because it's very easy to fall into the trap of looking at data and that telling the whole story. And I think everybody here understands that there's so much more to the story than just the numbers. But also I, I wonder, I think, I mean, I learned today that, you know, A through G is not utilized in the same way in every single district. And I would imagine there's a great number of community members too, who did, who did not know that. So I think that that's an important distinction. I just wanted to, to bring it up.
You know, and I'll get you next, I promise. I, I, I want to recognize that, but I also, you know, in really thinking about it, and this is quite literally just coming now, so watch out. But you know, that has been a standard in a conversation about A through G alignment for a long time. And how, how aligned we are, how different we are. You know, my, my concern is, is that we had a meeting today, we'll talk about that after, right? Where we talked about partnerships with our community college partners, right? And, and the certifications that even skilled labor and, and, and different industries need are going to be aligned with A through G requirements more and more. And, and so I'm, I'm struggling a bit because we've always tried to differentiate and offer and not set graduation requirements to be completely aligned to give that space in that breathing room. Specifically, I think relating to math, you know, and we're trying to give, again, breathing room. The ability to not necessarily go the distance on math in every moment. But I'm wondering if that moment is changing genuinely, not to leave students behind. I never want to do that. But we are looking at our city that the cost of living is extraordinary, where you better have a certification. I, I don't have a college degree, I worry, right? And, and I'm a talented individual, I can go out there, but you know what? I am always on the edge. I am, until I have that piece of paper, okay? And, and I have demonstrated that work. I know that, that's my lived experience. I've chosen a different path, I understand that. And I've gotten places great. But we need to give students the ability to be secure in their lives. And, and when we're talking about a minimum of six-figure income to live in your hometown, I don't know how we do that without formalized education on the books. And, and I don't know how we set our kids up for success if they're not graduating at this point, A through G eligible. So that is a shift. But no, but, and I, so it's not one that I want to, I want to just kind of quickly consider, but I really want to break that down if we can to see, I, I think it's primarily, once again, a math problem. But if we could really take a look at that and, and it is, it's your wheelhouse. It's going to be academic affairs that, that would welcome. But, but I think it's an important conversation as we talk about the evolutions that we need to make in order to be a competitive district. So.
And, and thank, and I think there was an article two weeks ago that came out that there's this complete shift for students getting certified versus continuing in college, but there's a big shortage of labor. I mean, nurses today, you, you, you heard about what's happening right now, 20% shortage of just in the nursing. And so the Kaiser strike is not a surprise. But my question also is, as you may recall, not long ago, there were all this data about students failing when they go to college for, where they English and math. Has there been any extra support from the state based on, you know, what happened two years ago? For example, when the numbers were just horrifying, where students were, couldn't pass the English or the minimum mathematic requirements to even getting to a community college? And I know there's been a shift toward that because there is already a natural attrition for student college students. And that's also affecting a lot of state budgets, a lot of community colleges are having a tough time right now filling up to students. That's i.e. the dual immersion push now, right? So my question is, are we getting any kind of extra support also based on some of the previous data? And will we be rewarded by the state or other entities for having these numbers in the areas of, let's be honest, English and mathematics has been the biggest concern when it comes to college readiness. Are we getting any kind of an extra support or just in bring up the numbers or even being rewarded for the numbers we have? I'm very happy in some of these numbers I'm seeing. Is there anything out there?
In terms of like, for instance, a reward for the growth we've shown in algebra? No, but like not monetarily, but like.
That's cute.
Bragging rights and like all sorts of, you know, psychic rewards. We do receive funding according to English Language Learners and our LCAP. And so there are some, there's definitely a plan, there's a roadmap and there are some funds attached to supporting some of our special populations. And I would also say, you know, when we talk about A to G and, you know, the multiple pathways and choices that exist post-high school, I think we, what I hear is that we share a common commitment to providing multiple pathways to college and career success through our CTE pathways, through our collaborations with Valley College. As President Ferguson mentioned, there was a meeting today to discuss dual enrollment options and providing a pathway to concurrently complete high school.
Don't interrupt. Thank you.
Yes. So we definitely share that commitment to multiple pathways to college and career success.
And I'm going to go to Ms. Ponsor Campcar and then I, I have a comment and then we'll go to the superintendent.
Great. I was just going to say, I know that the National Clearinghouse data, which reports out on students who have attended, who are attending two-year and four-year college will come out December? Late October? Okay, we took it up, I guess in December last year. So I think maybe that's the, I know we're going to talk about it in the Academic Affairs Committee. And so maybe that is the time to like make this kind of mapping of our students. 50% of our students are graduating A through G eligible. How many of those students are going on to four-year institutions? How many of them are going on to two-year institutions? Cause I think to Mr. Ferguson's point, what I really want to make sure is just that our students know that this is a thing, right? And that if they are graduating even not A through G eligible, that they're still not attending community college because they need remedial work, as Dr. Arkanian was saying, right? I want to make sure that it's, it's true like rigor and that we're, that we're measuring that. But I think we can maybe think about all of those different pathways.
Fully, I, I think we're like aligning on, on, the conversation needs to happen. I, I think I would like to see kind of, before it goes to the committee, I'd like to see kind of a board conversation that kind of outlines and silos it a bit because it could be broad and overly broad. And, and, and. be broad and overly broad, and it could be, hey, there's a focus, because if we're going to go and focus on like, for instance, remedial, can we get that answer with community college partners in advance, right? They have makeup courses, things like that. How do we incorporate that potentially in the school schedule? How do we incorporate that potentially as dual enrollment, frankly? If so, what pathway does that put them on per the meeting today, right? Because we were talking about, we'll talk about this in a few seconds, folks, but we're talking about offering multiple pathways with dual enrollment, trying to say, hey, you can get everything from your AA to just a year's worth of school done. All huge advantages for the long term. And let me just tell you, the innovation and the thought, Ms. Young, Dr. Paramo, and Dr. Weisberg, there was energy in this room for innovation. There was energy in this room for partnership. You are not going to recognize the educational experience in three years, four years of these learning institutions because of, I think, what's possible. But I do want to see how those partnerships could potentially pick up some of the costs. And I think that's where I'm, I want to just kind of silo it a bit more. That way, we can concentrate our asks while we're designing this and moving this forward, because this has been a three, four-year project at this point. So, you know, so I appreciate your expertise in this and your expertise, Ms. Casio as well, and Dr. Andrews, but I, let's get this as a board conversation, then we'll get it kind of shaved down and sent back to committee, and then committee can do really the deep dive. So, awesome. Ms. Casio.
I did want to say one thing, and that our school sites have been working really hard to make sure that we have like 98%, 96% of our courses are all UC approved, including CTE. So it's not that much of a tweak in what we're doing to get more kids qualified. So I just want to make sure that you know it's not programmatically, even though we have different pathways, the pathways are all UC approved, so.
Well, and that, that took foresight and leadership to do that, and Ms. Casio has been at the helm of that for quite some time. I think one of the first meetings I had with you was, look, I'm trying to get this course approved and this course approved, and it's been very exciting, but that's a culmination of a lot of work and a lot of other teachers and a lot of other folks moving the ball on this. So we are better positioned to make this pivot potentially as a result of their, of their hard work. So I'm going to go to Dr. Paramo, and then I'll go to Dr. Agonya.
So I just want to point out that I think you have a district leadership team that is very strong instructionally. And when we have this conversation, it's really hard to not be jumping in every five seconds with thoughts and ideas and, and stuff like that. I'm honestly not sure. Everybody's impressed with the Algebra I data, including me, and I'm very proud of it, and it's a huge big deal. But I think it extends far beyond the result. We have created a true professional learning community with teachers who are willing to interrogate their practice all the time that makes them vulnerable. You have to be vulnerable to say, what I'm doing is not working. How do I do it better? How do I make it better? They have fundamentally changed the way in which they are assessing, the way in which they're grading. They're having conversations that are absolutely amazing about what does the grade mean? When I issue this grade on the report card, what does it mean? What is it supposed to mean? That's where the magic is. That's what we're trying to create, and that's not an easy conversation to have with teachers because they're licensed practitioners and everybody's got an idea of what their practice should be. So, so this is really truly innovative. This is huge. Now, if we can take and replicate what we're doing in algebra and move that to geometry, which we are really deep into at the moment, then that goes into Algebra II, and then it transitions to science, and then it goes into social studies. We're creating a community that's really going to be doing this work, and I'm hoping we're going to see transformational data that goes across the board. And that's what's really exciting to me, and that, and that's the work we're doing. We already have science teachers who are attending these math meetings to learn what they're doing. And that's the beauty of it, because other teachers are going to sell this to other teachers better than we can. And I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you for presenting it that way. Because you just think about outcomes and you don't think about that vulnerability. I certainly, that certainly has a bit in consideration in my book, and I think that that's been a flaw in my, in my judgment there. So I just, I really appreciate that, and yeah, we don't ask doctors to sit around and compare what went wrong all the time, right? We don't expect that, but we do expect that of teachers. Wow. Anyway, sorry, I know that that's, anyway. Dr. Agonya.
Dr. Paramo, you must be reading my mind, because you just answered the question I had. But also, at one point, in terms of, I know we have guidelines from the state, but also looking at what's around us, the current markets, for example, you know? My friend from Warner Brothers just got laid off. They're laying off people in the industry that we have known for, right? The markets are shifting, they're moving around. Now, how, how, when it comes to partnership with businesses in the areas, I love seeing all these new engineering students, they're all engineering, which makes me, again, but I'm just curious how well versed are we in terms of internally shifting quickly toward areas of focus for future, you know, jobs versus what the state mandates? Because the state has certain guidelines we have to follow. How much wiggle room do we have, especially in certain markets, like the, what we're talking about right now, five-month strike, right? I mean, we are in Burbank, that is the reality, but you're also seeing the shifts now. And my question is, again, do we have the ability or to, do we have wiggle room to look at certain things, saying, well, you know what? The state says this, that's great, but at the same time, we need to look at the industries that are around us and start focusing more, especially with what's happening right now with the complete shift of what Burbank is known for, right? The movie industry, but it's happening. That's the reality of it, right? The mergers are not working. AT&amp;T just gave up Warner Brother, now it's owned by Discovery. You know, you're seeing all of this, but yet, at the same time, there are certain industries growing, especially when it comes to, for example, partnering up with the unions. Trades are very big right now. There's shortage of people in the trade sectors. So I'm just curious for viewers and even myself, how much wiggling room do we have where we're saying, okay, we're doing this, following the mandates, but at the same time, we have this much room to quickly maneuver?
Well, and just to hop on before I hand it off to Ms. Casio, because she is the expert. You know, I recently had a conversation with the carpenters, and, and again, these are certifications that people earn at the age of 21, that they earn, when they, they have to be usually a little old, be a little bit older. So when I, when I see those partnerships, because I have, I've been approached by them, IATSE on, on certain things, our stagecraft folks, you know, a lot of these partnerships, they are focusing on the community colleges who have the resources, who have the built-in infrastructure, who have the technology, that sometimes it's hard for us to support. So I think that's where some of these pathways are going to exist, but I know Ms. Casio has been working on this a heck of a lot longer and knows her stuff on this, so I defer to you, Ms. Casio.
So what I was going to say is that in terms of our regular program, we have less flexibility because there's all the requirements that we have to offer according to statute. We have a little bit of flexibility in some electives, but then we also have to make sure that we work with our current workforce as well, so we're not going to make huge changes there, because we want a stable teaching staff. But we have more flexibility when it comes to CTE, and every year, part of what we're required to do is analyze all of the local labor data and all of the different metrics that are used up and down the state and see if our pathways are still current or if we need to adjust them or start building new ones. So that is part of our work every year in CTE.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Dr. Andrews, anything else on your end? Yeah? Great. We made it through one report, folks. Everybody, thanks so much.
It was a shortage, didn't it?
You know what? Hey, this is the work, and I love that we're back to it. So, and we're focused on it, and as Dr. Paramo said, we have, y'all are hungry for this. So don't threaten me with a good time, let's go. So next, we'll go to item 10B, ISAM Advisors presenting findings on polling and prospective voters' perception on district in receptivity for a potential bond measure in 2024. And the bond man himself, Mr. Cantwell. Did you just call him Sweet Andy?
We're making him.
I'm, no, you know.
President Ferguson.
Mr. Cantwell.
Board members, Superintendent Paramo, colleagues, community. Before I introduce John Isom with ISAM Advisors, just want to orient and remind this board, as well as our community at home, where we are in this process. It was actually almost a year ago that we submitted an RFP to the community or to the public, seeking a architecture firm to help us with our facilities' master plan. That work began in earnest in February, and so for the past seven months, nearly eight months now, they've been working. They presented to our Administrative Affairs Committee last month, they're going to be presenting again this month. They were here at the board last meeting, they'll be at the board again in November. They are shooting toward a completion date of December. However, even though they're not yet done with their report, I have regular meetings with them, including this morning, and I'm really excited about our conversation next week for the committee, where they're going to begin talking about some of the projects that they've identified, some of the costs associated with it, and we see very quickly that when we look at the state of our facilities, we don't have the funding to invest in the facilities the way we need to for the long-term future. And so this board in August began a conversation that's now a fourth consecutive meeting where we've had a topic of the potential bond as a discussion. This evening is in direct response to our last meeting where we talked about the timeline to be able to explore a ballot measure for either March or November of next year. And so we hired ISAM Advisors at the last meeting. Incredibly, they were able to survey 400 voters in this community and are able to report back to us this evening their findings. So again, this is one among many data points that you have asked for to help you decide if and when a bond will be placed on a upcoming ballot. So with that, I'm going to introduce John Isom with ISAM Advisors. ISAM Advisors is really the leader statewide, supporting districts in all aspects of considering a bond, of campaigning and ultimately placing a bond on the measure, or on the ballot. They, I think, were successful in some 40-plus districts in '22.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, so didn't.
Maybe 40% of the state.
Forty percent, there you go. Forty, forty, I knew the number was 40. Forty percent of the state districts that were successful in ballot measures in '22 were working with ISAM Advisors, so it's a real pleasure to be able to introduce him and let him share the work that they've done over the past few weeks. So with that, John.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here as Andy introduced me. My name is John Isom with ISAM Advisors, and we play a role, and a role that I've actually done for 25 years. It's the only job I've ever had, was assisting school districts with finance. So whether a district needs a million dollars, or $500 million, or $50 million, our job is to help a district get from point A to Z, right? We need money to, hey, congratulations, we just closed the financing, you've got money in the bank, now go spend those dollars. A key part of that, as Andy alluded to, is this exploration process. And part of the reason, I would say, that we've been as successful as we have, and for some additional context, in the last eight years, we've worked with nearly 200 school districts to put these bond programs together. Think about that. There's not even 1,000 school districts, there's another 100 or so that are too small to do bond programs. We've worked with 200 of them in implementing these programs. And the reason we've been successful isn't so, it's in part because we're good at what we do with respect to campaigning and educating and being transparent, but I think it's really because we listen and we assess the feasibility of a program in a community, and we help you explore and understand, hey, this is what should work and could work in your community. Not, we choose this, and then we have to trick voters into supporting our idea. Rather, voters, we're listening to you, tell us what you want to tell us, we'll listen, and then that might be what a bond program might look like. So this is a key component of it. The presentation is up, so I'm going to take you through this, but this is a key component of it. Think of it as a quantitative assessment, obviously statistics, data, numbers, but there's also qualitative assessments that need to be done, right? Hey, what does the chamber think? Or what does the mayor think? Or what does the unions think? Those are also important steps. So by way of, by way of methodology, as was alluded to, you know, we set out to get 400 people to participate, that's your kind of standard sample. Those that participated were randomly selected from a pool of registered voters that not only were registered, but we would say likely to vote. So if you had never voted, even though you've been registered to vote for, you know, the last two, four, six, eight, 10 years, we excluded you. Obviously, if you didn't have a phone number, we excluded you, but you have nearly 70,000 registered voters, so it was, I would say, fairly easy to get the 400 people to participate. What were we trying to achieve here? Trying to achieve and understand attitudes and perceptions of the district. Not reality, but perceptions and attitudes of the district among your registered voters. Attitudes towards projects, towards taxes, towards a bond concept in general, towards the district. Do they like you, right? Because if folks don't like you, then they're not going to support you, no matter how affordable a bond program might be. So those were a lot of the different things that we were going to test. Took about five days to gather all that information, and again, this is one of the more valuable tools that we use in helping districts assess the feasibility. Now, just to orient you a little bit, I'm not going to go over every single number. The order of this is done to be as efficient and in the most, what I would say, common-sense approach, and it doesn't necessarily follow the order of the surveys themselves, right? There are a lot of questions that we randomized, so every person got a different order of questions. There are certain questions we asked in the end, not the beginning, but just so you get it, these were all of the questions, but put in an order that we thought made a lot of sense. So we do start out with that first question, education in California, going in the right direction or in the wrong direction? And interestingly enough, and I will say this, this is the first time I've seen the response where more people here said wrong direction than right direction. You know, there's a lot of 50/50s or close to it, or usually most have right direction, but this is the first district that actually had more wrong direction. So we did a little digging, and, and we found out, hey, there was not one particular group that was to blame, if you want to use that terminology for wrong direction. So whether it was Republicans or Democrats or declined-to-state voters, each one of them, for one reason or another, felt things were going in the wrong direction. So when you say, wow, what makes up that 49%, really is a combination of everybody. How would you rate the quality of education? This is one of those like questions, right? This is one of those, do they like us? And attempting to look at the positives, and we should look at the positives, I always peek at the negatives, in this case, the green, and the good news here is that people think you're doing a good job, right? You only have 5% say poor. So that's important. You'd like to see more excellence, certainly, but you have a lot of excellence and a lot of goods.
Question. So we did surveys and polling years ago when we did the previous bond. Did you correlate these questions to that so we could have a historic? No, okay.
Yeah, so this is not a tracking poll, which is, I think, what you're alluding to. Totally new look, totally new questions.
Got it, okay.
How would you rate the condition of classrooms and school facilities? This is an interesting one. It's a little bit of a double-edged sword. You know, if you do a good job of maintaining certainly the appearance of your facilities, you get good credit, you get good points here. A lot of people, hey, excellent, good. People think that the district's doing well. Only 3% said poor, but understanding a little bit about the district's master plan and certainly the district's prior history in implementing these school improvement measures, we know there are significant needs. But there's a perception that things are, again, largely good. The question on the right's an important one, because while we know very much about these individual voters, from their political party, to their age, to their ethnicity, gender, whether they're homeowner or renter, we know all that stuff, and this sample is, of course, reflective of your likely voters. What we don't know is, do you have a connection to the school? And this is an important data point, because this shows you, hey, 50% of the people that we surveyed have no ties to the school, and that's what you want, right? You don't want to do a Survey Monkey and let people self-select and have something that's disproportionately school-related. You want these to be, hey, how do the voters, all voters, feel about it? And so this is kind of a test question that we make sure that, that we're covering those bases. Okay. So this is the batch of attitudes towards the district. And so this was randomized, okay? But we've just put them in order of essentially higher support to lower support. And this follows the trend of nearly every district, right? Most people are familiar with the teachers, they have more opinions of the teachers, most people think that. Most people think the districts are never good at managing their finances, no matter how great your reserves are. Those are just some of the perceptions that exist out there. So we asked all of these questions, and overall, the response is good, right? When we're saying, do people like you, and you look at that, there's not disproportionate shares of negativity of pores. You have a lot of excellent, a lot of good, a big chunk of fairs, and then a substantial don't knows in some instance, particularly with John, right? Interesting sidebar, has really not much to do with this, but I think you would find it interesting. If you were to go back and maybe look at earlier surveys, Steve, that the district had done, particularly if you went back 10 years, the percent of don't knows has shrunk dramatically. And I don't think it's that people are more educated on the topic, but they're certainly more opinionated, whether that came out of COVID, or social media, or what have you, but it's very interesting that the percent of don't knows has shrunken pretty dramatically. But one would imagine that John would have the highest don't knows, given kind of his recency at the post, though.
But those are good numbers for a new superintendent, Dr. Pramo, so congratulations on those numbers to our school board. But, and I do want to point out, though, we are trying to build up to 55%. That is, and you said, you alluded to this, I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Isom.
Isom. So Mr. Isom spoke to this a little bit, but 55% is what we're looking at, but also we're looking at 67 as another number. That's horrifying to look at when you look at these numbers. But also, your approval rating, our approval rating, doesn't correlate to bond support. It informs it, right, as you said?
Yeah, I've seen bond programs in my 25 years that the tax rate was $9, and people said no. And the answer usually is, I don't like you, right? I don't like you, school district, you've upset me, there's a scandal, there's something going on, so it's a vote of no confidence, because I think we would all argue that $9 tax rate would be affordable for most. Okay, some additional questions, and then we're going to start to really get into some of the meat of it. And generally, this is, again, following things. So here are some thematic questions. We ask thematic questions. Do you believe there's a correlation between good schools and good property values? Overwhelmingly, voters here agree with that concept, 92%. That actually is kind of a significant rebound, because there was a period in time when everyone's property values were going up no matter what, great recession hit, and people looked around and said, hey, wait a minute, my good schools and my property values have rebounded more quickly or didn't decline as much. So I think that really drove home that point. I would never vote for a tax increase, no matter what it would be used for. This is another ideological question, and you have 36% of the folks that agreed with that particular question. So we're talking about just kind of ideological positions that people have. Because the state continues to reduce funding for school facilities, local voters should do more. 80% of the voters felt that there was truth to that statement. So to your point, Steve, of 55 or 67, excuse me, Mr. Ferguson. Okay, so here's one of the most important questions. We call this the pre-benchmark question, the ballot measure. And up until now, we've just kind of had a very, I would say, you know, basic conversation with the voters, but we haven't really gotten into the meat and potatoes of things. We go ahead and we actually read the 75-word run-on sentence known as the ballot language, because this is what an actual ballot language might appear. And so we read this, and I'm not going to read this level of detail, but the first third talks about certain projects, and then it's all legalese afterwards, but mentions bond amount and a rate, and how much million annually is going to be derived. And we say, would you vote for an election if the, or excuse me, would you vote yes if the election were held today? And interestingly enough, 90% of your voters have kind of made up their minds with very little information, right? 60%, 61% said, yeah, if the election were held today, I'd vote yes. 55% is what we're looking at here as kind of a goal. 30% of the folks said no, and then the balance were leaning one way or another or undecided. Why is this so important? This is what I would call the gut reaction, right? This is like, hey, do you support school? I have a grandmother who's since passed on. She was special ed teacher for 30 years, and I would talk to her about my career and my job, and I'd say, Grandma, do you ever have these bonds? And she, oh, I always vote for the children. That was her. And it wasn't even like, well, what if the tax was $1,000 or $2,000? It didn't matter. Her ideological position was, I always support children, just as there is an ideological of, I vote no on all taxes, right? This is important, because again, you want to be above 55%. So then we proceed with a whole battery of questions. Again, randomized, we've ordered these in order of most supportive to least amount of support. And so when you say, well, what's most important to your voters? It's leaky roofs. It's career tech, health, safety, and handicap accessibility, and outdated HVAC systems. 80% support for all of those. Continuing on, plumbing and sewer, security improvements, inadequate electrical systems, modernizing outdated classrooms, restrooms in school facilities, getting rid of portables with permanence, and upgrading playgrounds and playfields. Great support there, again, all above 70. Now, one thing I want to point out is this, the last one, take a look at that. It says SSA. What does that mean? That means split sample. And that means of the 400 respondents, 200 are going to get an SSA version of the survey, and 200 are going to get an SSB. So you'll see a few questions in here that we're asking essentially the same question, but we want to test out different language, right? Do people here call it a multipurpose room, or an auditorium, or cafeteria, or a gym, right? Do we call them playgrounds and playfields, or athletic fields and facilities? Same concept, different language. But again, great support here among your voters. Would you be more likely or less likely if you knew the funds would be used for these? Student support facilities, multipurpose rooms and cafeterias, energy efficiency, new performing arts building, repairing paved areas, walkways and parking lots, and upgrade athletic fields and facilities for school and community use? That's that SSB. Pretty remarkable, right? Words matter. The way that you say something makes a big difference. Even with that, and again, no one wants to be last on the list, still had 60% level of support. So when you look at this and you say, well, is there a project here that would ruin or damage our chance for success? I would say generally not, you know? And some of these things will come out in your qualitative conversations, but when you look at this and you say, is there something that really irks people? Maybe athletic fields and facilities might meet that criteria, but even then, you're talking about 36, 37% of the folks that would be less likely to support a project if they knew it was used for that. SSA at the top there, tax tolerances. So again, half the people were going to be asked questions on a $60, $49, or $36 per 100,000 of assessed value per year basis. And here's where we get a little bit of tax sensitivity. Up until now, it's been good. We like you, we like the projects. Oh, the tax rate, not bad, not great. $60, 53% support. You go down to 49, you get a little bit more, 57%. And then when you drop it down to $36, you get 59%, as one would expect. So there's a little bit of tax sensitivity here. Now, does that mean the district just says steer clear of anything below 55%? You could take that hard-line approach, but keep in mind, the question is, would you be more likely or less likely, not would it be a deal killer for you? Yes, question.
I was just going to ask, Mr. Cantwell or Dr. Pramo, remind me again where we're at right now with our current bond?
$49 and change.
Thank you. That's all, that's all I need.
Okay. So the other group, the SSB group, was asked similarly, but in this case, we broke it down on a monthly basis. And you can see at $5, $4, and $3, 52%, 53%, and then up to 60% at the $3 level. So it does generally make a difference depending on how you're sharing that information with voters. And again, some levels of tax sensitivity exist among your voters. Now, here's something that is a bit of history, and it's something that those that have been around or paid attention may know this. The last time the district attempted a measure, they did what was essentially what we call a tax rate extension plus five, right? Hey, voters, you approved this back in the day, it's going to drop off, let's just keep paying it and add another $5, and that generated a certain amount of proceeds. You have a similar situation. The 1997 bond that the district approved way back in the 1990s is going to drop off. So we said to voters, again, two different ways, well, what if you knew we wouldn't increase your tax rate? Would you approve it at that level? So the SSA made a difference, 59% support, 33% opposed. The SSB, tremendous support, right? And again, words matter. So the proposed measure would extend the tax rates from prior bond elections in 1997 and 2013 without increasing them. Great support there. Now, the thing about a tax rate extension, you don't generate as much proceeds, because we're not essentially having a new tax on top of the existing, but instead, we're kind of waiting for an old tax to go away, and then we're going to keep extending that. So instead of a, you know, $575 million, which would be around what you could get at $60 tax rate, you'd be looking at about a $370 million program if you were to extend the current $49 tax rate. Significant, a big benefit, a big dent, but a fraction, right, of what you might otherwise get with something new. Oh, the most important slide. This is the post-benchmark. And here, we've said, we took a moment, we've educated you, we've told you about the projects, we told you about the taxes, we told you about the possibility of a tax rate extension. Now that you've heard all this stuff, if the election were held today, would you vote yes or no? So the question is, is did we move the needle? Were we able to educate people and help them better understand things and get more support? And you can see here, the answer is yes. We went from 61% up to 65%. Even the no's went down a little bit, from 30% down to 28%. So what that tells us is two things. One, the support still exists above 55%, which is what you want to see. Two, with education, we improve our support. Some bonds, some districts, we just say, hey, don't even worry about it. Don't do anything. Just throw it on the ballot, and you'll be successful. You don't even need to campaign. Others, we say, you know what, you're right at the cusp, it doesn't really make a difference if you campaign or not, so maybe just do a little bit, campaign light. And then there are others where, you know, you start at 53%, let's say, but with information, you get 58, and those are the ones you're like, hey, we have to campaign, okay? So this is an insurance policy. Doing a campaign would certainly improve your chances of success by, you know, five percentage points over what we again call kind of the gut reaction or the ideology. Okay, wrapping up here. This is an important question, because we often get asked the question, when's the best time to go? Should we go in March? Should we go in November? One of the things that we come back with is, it depends what your voters say, and it depends what your voter demographics look like. What does that mean here? We're saying, March is going to have a solid turnout. It's not going to be huge. It's the presidential primary. November's going to have the presidential general, and we'll have a very large turnout. There's a different voter that only shows up in November than the person who never misses an election. So we want to test that, and we want to pull that information out. So when you look at this information here, you get an idea of the March 2024 likely voters. These are high propensity voters. These are people who, over the last seven elections, have voted four, five, six, or seven times. They're likely to show up again. 64% yes, 30% no, the balance somewhat undecided. When we extract out what we're saying, the November only, meaning probably not going to show up in March, but they're going to show up in November, the support goes up a little bit. 66% yes, the opposition goes down a little, down to 26%, and then similarly, you've got some undecided and lean yes. This isn't a huge difference, right? Statistically speaking, within margin of error, it's not a huge difference. So oftentimes, I tell a district, like Redondo Beach, hey, guys, you have to wait. Don't go in March, you're going to be better off going in November. I would say, based on the data here, there's certainly a chance to be successful in March, given that there's not that big of a distinction between these two demographic groups, okay? Yes? Okay. Well, conclusions and recommendations. I think this is fantastic news. I think this is great news. This is the kind of news that we hope to be able to report on and say, the voters like you, the voters like the concept of a bond, they like the projects, but there's tax rate sensitivities. And I don't have a tax rate to recommend to you at this point in time. I would say, that's where the qualitative kicks in. Talking to the chamber, talking to the elected officials, talking to others to say, hey, what do you guys think? $370 million would be great, no tax increase, that would be my default, certainly, but something bigger, 570 million, but doing something new certainly should be considered as well. My best advice I can give you is, listen to the community. This survey is a tool to give you that feedback, but there's other community that we need to speak to in order to go forward. If you wanted to go in March, if everything worked out, you've got two months, and you would need to submit a resolution December 5th, okay, to the LA County Register of Voters. And that resolution would essentially explain and provide detail as to the bond amount, the tax rate, the projects, et cetera, et cetera. We work with the district on crafting that resolution along with bond council. If the district says, hey, you know what, it's a little bit of a footrace, I don't know that I feel comfortable, that's okay, too. You have until August 8th of 2024 in order to make the November ballot, okay? So December 5th, August 8th. Statistically, again, you have a slightly better chance in November, all things being equal, but we also don't know what November holds, all things being equal, right? March is a little bit closer around the corner. But all in all, again, great results, great information, and I'm happy to take questions that you have.
No, Ms. Ponsor-Campcar had questions. I certainly have questions, and then Dr. Agarvani. Go ahead, Ms. Ponsor-Campcar.
Thank you, President Ferguson. I just want to get clear on that, the slide that you showed on March versus November. And so is that likely voters coming from kind of the voter database, because they've said, like, they voted in previous March elections and that, or, because it, Mr. Cantwell just sent me the questions. I didn't see that as a question, like, are you planning to vote in the March 2024 election?
Yeah, we never trust a person's opinion, because they'll all say, oh, yeah, I'm going to vote. But what we have there, in addition to, like I said, ethnicity, age, gender, et cetera, is their voting history. So we know, you know, here's the last 10, 12 elections, and we can say, all right, let's look at the last seven. And if you've been a regular voter, we know you're going to be a high-prop voter, and we put you into that March group. If you voted zero, one, or two, then we know you're not a high propensity voter. You only show up every four years, maybe for the governor's race as well, and those people make up the other group, the November onlys.
So, one, if we could get that forwarded to the whole board, that would be helpful, just so we're all kind of moving forward on that. I think that that's important. Thank you, Mr. Cantwell, for providing that. The cross tabs are important on these polls. So my background is as a political consultant, and I now do this. So anyway, so I appreciate this in a lot of different ways. My challenge is, is that we asked, for instance, in the beginning, you know, the generic kind of overall question of, do you trust the district? I think it was with finances, something to that language, right? And there was an assessment given, right? And traditionally, in other polling, right, polling also is more expensive, depending on the number of questions you ask, right? So the longer we have to keep people on the phone, the more responses we have to generate. My concern is, is that we haven't tested quite literally recent headlines, right? So a lot of people, because there is a blog and a newspaper that is very limited in staffing, don't know about narratives in particular that are happening with our school district. As a result, you can move support rather dramatically if somebody doesn't know something. So if people don't know, for instance, that the district had an accounting error that misplaced $12 million, did we test that specific message?
No.
So that, to me, is worrisome, because I think that does, so, one, we're looking at a percentage. So our last bond passed in 2013 with 61%. I just looked it up and showed Dr. Weisberg. As we can see here, it's a more conservative electorate. Now, 2013, yeah, that would have been a more conservative, again, not a Democratic primary buster years, that's right.
Small turnout.
So similar conditions, maybe not the same, maybe not the same energy, but that test in particular is concerning, because again, we're now talking, that was at 61.78%, something like that. So there was clearly more support for a bond at that moment. And my concern is, is how much do we see in some of the questions, a little bit of tick. Um, a little bit of tick down, that's great. I I think for the most part, these numbers hold. But I really, I I think it's it's kind of critical for us to understand what that what that question is and what the answer to that question is, is now that you know this. How did, how did, how does this impact your vote? Um, so I I think that's more critical than we know. Um, one, because we do have an organized opposition in this community. You saw thirty three or what, thirty six percent or whatever it was. Um, they are committed, um, to, you know, the the principles of no taxation, right? And and that's their philosophy. Um, but they go door to door, and we will go door to door, too. Uh, but we have to organize a lot more sheep and a lot more people and a lot more, you know, uh, they only have to organize a dedicated opposition. Uh, so, and and according to that, four more percent. So can their number, you know, or however, uh, uh, ten more percent, but can that move that? I worry about that with undecided voters. I worry about that with the school board having a fifty fifty approval rating. Uh, John Paramo being an unknown. Um, so these are the conditions that I worry about a little bit that just go. What's our answer to that? I think November at a minimum gives it more time, but. But, again, do we barely get a victory here? And then eliminate all chances for a conversation about ongoing revenue, which is what we need. Um, we need both. We need both. I'm not, I'm not denying that. But but we have to be real, in my opinion, we've got to just be realistic about, we we can't just keep doing one and not the other. And the numbers that we do have today show a five percent margin of victory. What's the poll, uh, margin of error?
Uh, four point eight eight.
Okay.
But that's, it's ten percent, to be clear, on the post benchmark.
Correct, without testing the narrative of a twelve million dollar accounting error. So that's where I'm just being straightforward, and and if I'm planning a campaign against this, I'm going, this is what I'm gonna say. And it's it's very easy to say, I see your hand, I got you, I got you. Twelve million is such an easy punchline, and that's my concern. Sorry, Dr. Weisberg.
No, no, it's fine. Um, I I think one of the things to take into consideration to your valid concern is that we have. Community partners who've already stepped up, who I think will do a lot to sort of chip away at the. If there is substantial community concern about finances, if we have. The realtors, we have the chamber, we have city council, people that have, um, a reputation for being solid, sort of fiscal. A advisors in many ways, I think that's really, really helpful. Um, and they've all signaled support for this, you know. Before we've even made a decision. And so I I think you're right. But I also think that one of the ways that we can successfully combat it is by saying, th- these partners that we're working with. Have faith in the district and understand the value of keeping our, you know, making sure that our schools stay at the high quality they are. So I mean, I think the question you're asking is an important one. I think we have some ammunition to respond to that. Um, do we, do we need to be able to go door to door and have conversations? Absolutely. I mean, I think. If we, if we wait until November, then we'll also have the results from FICMAT. And so we'll be also be able to say at that point, hey, we did this audit, here are the steps we've put into place to address these issues. And is it gonna, you know, is it gonna calm everybody down? No. But a vast, you know, but but I think people who have that kind of trepidation are also people who probably have a little bit higher. Education about the district in general. And so I I think to your point, Mr. Ferguson, this really is about like. The strategy that we put into place and being really mindful about, you know, what are the, what are the negatives that are gonna come at us? And how do we intelligently respond to them? And I think we're in a decent place right now to say, well, here are some of the ways that we can already respond. Um, because we're we're very lucky in that the community seems to be supportive. And I and I also want to say, to your point, I think every single one of us up here agrees with the dire necessity of both, right? We have to be able to, uh, repair and maintain and, uh, improve our facilities. And we also need to be able to find ways to keep our programs and pay our staff. Um, and I think we can only, we can, we have to do it one at a time, but I I don't, I don't think anybody up here is saying one is more important than the other, nor nor did you imply it such. But I think it's important because we have teachers listening, right, for them to hear us say, like, we we want. We want both, but we also want you to teach in classrooms that aren't leaking and that have air conditioning. And, you know, we can keep putting the Band-Aid on things, but at some point, even money is gonna run out for Band-Aids. And so I I think the concerns you're raising are hugely important because we need to be able to come up with real answers to them. Um, and I think we're in a good position, but the more we sort of, you know, ourselves play devil's advocate, the better it's going to be, the better set up we're going to be to have. Responses and really make up a positive push and get this done. Um, so I pre, I appreciate the sort of the the difficult questions because. It makes us have to think about, well, do we have prospective answers? Do we have prospective community partners? And it's, it's, I'm gonna say tentatively exciting because I don't want to jinx anything, to see how much positivity has been generated from a traditionally very conservative. Part of our community, fiscally so.
Yeah. I, and I, I appreciate that, and and you and I have always had, I think, really. Hello? No, it's all good. Um. I I think it's important we struggle with this a bit. I I think it is with the state of where we're at. The challenge is, right, we continue to find things in finance and continue to find situations that, until we know the bottom of it. We don't know what we're dealing with. We don't know the ecosystem that we're dealing with. We're gonna talk about this very openly. Um, as we can and when we do with FICMAT, you name it. Um, because we have to and we need to. But I I think it is important that we struggle with it a bit, that we really do, as you say, you know, wrestle with this. I I think even a close victory, and and I'm just offering this, I think even a close victory. Undercuts us on some level. Um, because, again, we've got to figure, and I think it is, I think, the way we're talking about it, we're we're addressing it as, what is the answer to that problem? That that revenue problem, what is the answer to the ongoing money problem? Um, and I think we've got to tie or figure that out in the process of this, and if we can find that and thread that needle, great. Um, but I I think it is important that the public sees struggle with this a bit.
Thank you.
And agree with you.
So you didn't do the LACC D. One for twenty sixteen and the recent one, the three point five and a five billion dollar bond, right?
No.
Which was very close, right? Um, so my question to you is, first of all, did you put in the survey in any way or shape, the cost of materials and goods and have it skyrocketed? Meaning that your dollars that you invest in infrastructure doesn't carry it like it used to? Because that's something people sometimes forget about it, that. I'm, that I'm fixing my roof right now. It costs twice what it cost four years ago. Where a lot, sometimes people forget that, that's how important it is because the same dollar we're gonna spend to fix our buildings now, it's gonna cost us twice now. Is, was that in to any shape or way considered into any kind of a survey question? That your dollars are not going as far as it used to?
Yeah, we 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 try to avoid some of those persuasive arguments, um, just to try to play it straight down the line, right, or straight down the middle, rather. Um, and and candidly. A lot of people think, oh, well, voters care about how big the bond is, or they care about this, or they care about that, and and some of the nuances. And it really boils down, and you saw that in that first slide, the pre-benchmark question. Ninety percent of your voters had an opinion like, oh, I'd vote yes or no, right? It was like sixty thirty. Um, so 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 we didn't ask anything. We didn't try to convince them about how expensive things have gotten. And and why we need it, et cetera, et cetera. This was just a straight down the middle. We have needs. If these were the types of projects that we would do, and if it would cost about this much, would you support us or not? And and you saw, most of the people have essentially had their mind made up, at least at this.
Yeah, and then, in terms of margin of error, just vulnerability of the markets right now, and this whole looming recession, you know. That wasn't also considered into, right? It's not, okay?
And and keep and keep in mind this, we passed thirty bonds during COVID in twenty twenty. Okay, we passed another thirty bonds during the great, or I won't say great, but all the talk about supply chain and inflation in twenty twenty two. Uh, there were a number of districts that we said, don't go. Because the survey says you won't be successful, whether that was in twenty twenty COVID, whether that was in twenty twenty two. So I'm in the business of 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 winning, not recommending bad programs, right? So when we look at information, we process that information, and we give you the best advice we can. And sometimes the best advice is, you cannot pass, or you should wait and go until November. Um, because that's ultimately your best chance for success. Uh, I do want to say one thing, and 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 to get to the the one issue that was raised. And and it goes back to my earliest comments about we're testing perceptions, not realities. And and if the district had a, an accounting error that was an embarrassing issue, and it happened a couple of months ago, or what have you. That would be cooked into this, right? So maybe our support would be better. Maybe people don't care about the accounting error. Uh, we don't know, but what we know is, based on attitudes at this moment, and based on all the information available to people. Accounting errors or not, test scores or not, all of the issues that are going on, the support exists. To pass a school improvement bond measure, and that's the important thing. Now, we could, if you said, hey, we're gonna go in November. Uh, you can do what's called a a tracking poll, and you can say, let's test these same questions, and we can ask specific additional questions if we need to. But I'm giving you just the snapshot of today of where the attitudes are for potential bond program at this point.
And these were what, four, four voters or three, four?
The 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 universe, we're we're all likely voters.
Likely.
So if you have ne, if you've registered to vote and you have never voted. Unless you just registered, you know, this year, you were not included in that group.
I was outside on a. So and then, and in terms of popularity, I mean, a politician told me a long time ago, you, you know, school board members are never popular, right? At one point, people are just gonna be angry at you no matter what happens.
I don't know about you, but I'm just.
Um, and and then out of, uh, so, so then out of curiosity, have you, again, this cost of, this is one of my biggest concerns. And I was involved in both of those bonds, the three point three billion and the five, and it happened in such a short period, twenty sixteen, twenty twenty two, passed by fifty eight percent. This is the biggest bond, the college one.
Sorry, just clarify.
Yeah, sorry, yes, I wish we had five billion dollars sitting in our.
I don't. Andy would have a good tack.
But my question is, based on your experience, just based on a supply chain and expenses going up. Have you experienced bonds that have worked better because voters realize that, hey, you know what? The same timber that we're buying five years ago, now it's doubled in price. Have you had any kind of experience within that period or not?
I haven't. And and you know, we've passed four bond measures in an eight-year period for one district. And so in that community, the voters are saying, yes, another please, yes, another please. For them, it was a little small community, they didn't have the tax base to get the projects done, and they were desperate for, in this case, a new junior high, very small school district. But we've had other bond programs that have been three in an eight-year period. So there's no, this worked over here, and therefore it's gonna work here. Our job is to say, based on the data in Burbank. This is our interpretation and our read of things. And again, it's only half. You still have the qualitative exercise to undertake in the next two to eight months, and then that would help refine this further.
Ms. Ponser Campcar.
Thank you, sir. Um, I have two questions. Uh, so the first is, you outlined the timeline for sending a resolution to the county. Um, if we were to contract with ISM on the overall campaign, what would that look like from a timeline perspective? In terms of, like, I think we could have conversations with local folks getting them on board. Um, but I think there is a concern that March feels like it's not very far away, but it also sounds like you're not saying that it's impossible.
Yeah, so the 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 challenge with March obviously is is getting ready, right? There's, there's two elements. There's the, we gotta talk to all the stakeholders and get their support. Just as there's tremendous value in the survey and feedback that we've gotten from voters, we want to get feedback from stakeholders. Because they're the folks that could move public opinion if so and so says, hey, I don't think this is a good idea, or it should be a tax rate extension, et cetera. The other aspect about the campaign is that the campaign committee has a job, which is to educate, right? Which is to advocate, but it's also to get people out to vote. In November, that job is a lot easier because you've got, fill in the blank, presidential candidates, you have all these other races, all these other propositions on the ballot. So you're gonna have a very big turnout, even if you never put your own measure on the ballot. So that's another question that I asked the district is to say, hey, do you think your campaign can get ready to help get out the vote? Um, I would say the run up there is is at 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 the short end of things, three months, right? The communication with voters as far as the advocacy isn't gonna happen until mid-January at the earliest. It's gonna be get organized in December, fundraise in December, uh, you know, line up volunteers in December. But the implementation phase would really be in January, and of course, heavy in in February, because the election is March fifth.
Except ballots arrive February fifth.
Correct.
So we have a month.
Well.
Yeah.
You know, the reality is, is 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 that most people are like me, we're procrastinators. And we've tracked when people actually turn in their ballot. There's a spike at the beginning, about ten fifteen. And then no one turns it in, or like a couple of percent points along the way. And then you've got this big rush at the end of about forty percent of the ballots get turned in in the last week. But to to the president's point, we can begin in earnest in getting people out to vote. The good news is about eighty three percent of your voters vote by mail. Why is that good? That means we have a month to encourage those eighty three percent. Hey, did you turn in your ballot? Did you turn in your ballot? Did you turn in your ballot? As opposed to the day of the election, hey, can you go vote right now, please? The election closes in two hours, right? So vote by mail has certainly changed the way we do things, uh, but I think it gives you more. Flexibility and and really greater opportunities than before.
So I'm gonna hop in and then go to Ms. Tabit and then Dr. Paramo, okay. Uh, just just making sure you want to speak, okay. Um, one, have we, have you, so in the November electorate, I remember there was great conversation about variations in the electorate that weren't able to be tracked by polling, right? That that there was some, I don't think that was the case in California. Were we still kind of relatively accurate with most polling? In your, in your assessment, remember, it was, it was, we didn't know who was gonna turn out in the last general election because polling was never accurate.
We feel like our polling is pretty accurate.
I'm not, I'm not.
No, I know, I know what you're saying, yeah. The consensus nationally was you can't trust the polls. And I think you have to look at the source in so many of those instances. The source and the purpose of a poll oftentimes is a headline. This guy's leading, it's insurmountable.
You bet.
Oh, wait, it's not insurmountable. So so I think a lot of that stemmed from that. I don't think we were too far off in our expectations. At a local level, again, because we're going right down the middle.
Perfect.
And so our projections are gonna be as accurate as they possibly can be.
Yeah, I I think it's just, it's gonna be an important thing to just, so if you could look back specifically at just what that margin looked like and just how far it was. If it's within that three to five percent, great, fantastic. That's our margin of error. That's what we want to see. Um, if it's a, if it's more variable than that, that's a factor we should know when we're at, when we're at ten, when we're at five, when we could get to that number. Um, so I just would like to see that, just because we don't know who the heck's gonna vote. We don't, right, we saw this, like, rather dramatic change in in what the electorate looked like for a midterm election. Um, where more younger voters turned out in 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 droves, right? And and not expected. So all those things influence these things, especially when a percent is, how many voters? You know, it it won't be many, it's like a thousand, so, so maybe less. So that's one. Two, to your point, to Dr. Weisberg's point about affiliations, you know, Measure S, all these different. Bond, parcel taxes, you name it, had every color logo up there. And what we do know is that people are identifying less and less with organizations. So I do want to point that out as well, that we can expect certain groups to carry certain weight, but not everything. And and that also, we learned, because we did have everybody, we did have a really grand coalition, but we just had enough people. Um, now, that was a parcel tax. It's gonna be different on the bond. I get that, but I am flagging that. Um, that we've got to bolster on top of that with grassroots organizing. And and you, of all people, know that as the top folk getter in the city's history. Um, I will always, uh, remind folks of that because I'll hail the queen, uh, having said that. Um, the other thing I'm concerned about is AB fourteen twenty three. Uh, it was a bill that was just signed by the governor, uh, relating to artificial fields. Um, and that, uh, I think it's PFAS or something, has to be removed from these fields. So is that, does that impact the replacement of our turf? Does that then move what is identified in this polling as the least? Um, uh. You know, desired expense of a sports facility into a ten million, twenty million dollar ask of our community. Um, I don't know what the structure of AB fourteen twenty three is, but if we could look into that. Um, I I tracked it early on. I didn't, I was like, ooh, maybe, maybe not. Sure enough, it got signed by the governor, so on the fourteenth. So, um, that's gonna be a big equation, because if our city partners aren't. partners aren't willing to contribute that 10 million, which I don't think they're in the financial position to do that, right? We've got to come up with an answer for that because that turf, when is that field, Mr. Cantwell, do you know the, the warranty? Sorry. Poor guy.
Again, we have the funding allocated already for the field and track replacements. The field, I believe, is about three years left.
Okay.
About.
So we wouldn't need bond funding for it? Or, but I'm also talking about the periphery. I'm all, right.
Yeah. President Ferguson, you're extremely wise to, to mention that recent legislative change because that could completely change the funding equation of what we've set aside funds for. If we have to actually look at a, a complete removal and installation of new surface material, then that's going to potentially change that.
Well, and, and the good thing is we have, it sounds like we have a little more time. So because those kids deserve it too. And, and because it's a big expense. So this is just the, the brain thinking, this is the work that we've got to do. And, and I don't think I'm an automatic no. I'm not trying to invalidate this poll and I, I'm saying there's missing data and the missing data is rather significant, not due to your error, but really just due to the fact that we need to, we need to kind of hone on message of what we're doing here. It, it is important that we're passing new revenues. I get that. But I, I just, the omissions are hard. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Tabit.
In your experience, you've done a lot of campaigns, from what I'm hearing you say. Does other bond issues, parcel taxes, whatever, in a race diminish the, do they cancel each other out? Yeah. Do they, does it reduce, like if there's multiple bonds, multiple parcel tax on the ballot at the same time, do people just, oh my goodness, no way, too much, you know, or do they tend to lean one way and not the other? Because as Mr. Ferguson has said, you know, we need an influx of money regardless. A bond helps with that. It pays for certain facilities needs, but it also then frees up some general fund money that can help with other things that if a parcel tax did or didn't pass, there'd still be. So, but, but does it weaken your case if too many bond issues are on the ballot at one time?
In my experience, no. In fact, we get, that's probably the most common question asked is, well, if there's other things on the ballot, what happens? Is there statewide on the ballot? People just vote no on all the bonds? That's just not true. Historically speaking, we've got 25 years of data. You're better off having a statewide school on the ballot than not. So when you compare the average success rate of with a school bond statewide versus without, they do better. I'm reminded of 2016 presidential turnout, Shasta County, State of Jefferson, one of the most conservative areas in the state. We had Shasta College, Shasta High School, Redding Elementary, and the city of Redding had four respective tax asks of the voters in one of the most conservative parts of the state. Shasta College passed, Shasta High passed, Redding Elementary passed. The city didn't pass, but we didn't work with the city, but we work with the other. So I've just worked with so many districts that have had overlapping or complementary or even competing tax measures. And I think if you ask yourself, oh yeah, I would support Burbank Unified's ask, and then all of a sudden, the city Burbank said, well, I'm going to put something on the ballot. Are we now not supporting Burbank Unified? People are going to judge each one on their merits and that's been my experience. So I, I do, I don't worry about another measure on the ballot. You can actually test those types of things. If they were both on the ballot, which one would you pick? And most of the survey data comes back overwhelmingly that the schools, A, fare better than other asks because of cute kids and what have you, and B, that they are not impacted by the inclusion of another measure.
Sponsor Camp, I'm sorry, Tabit or you'll, Ms. Ponsor, Kim Card.
Thank you. So on that note of state bonds, I had a question to that effect, which was, well, first, are we, do we know when the state's going to be putting a bond on for next year? Because I know they were thinking about it. And then.
November.
They are doing November.
That's the latest.
Okay. And then Mr. Cantwell, you may know this, does, does the timing of when we would pass a bond impact our eligibility for that state matching fund? Like, I imagine that I make up that we could apply earlier and I know you've mentioned that it's like kind of first come, first served, but if they haven't even passed it until November, I wonder if that matters.
Yeah. So absolutely benefit by getting ourselves in sooner. So if the, the state bond passes in November, us having a six-month runway to be able to start getting projects actually bid out and getting them ready to, to break ground the following summer, having ourselves in line quicker is always going to be a benefit when it comes to competing for, you know, no matter how large, right now, there's still competition between two ideas of a, a state bond at the November election. Regardless of which one goes, there's still not going to be enough funds to go around the state. And so getting ourselves in sooner in line is, is definitely a positive.
But they need to be shovel-ready projects, correct? They would need to be shovel-ready? That's usually the designation that's, so we would have to have DSA, everybody approved everything, right? And, and we could have that done by March, between a March approval and November?
No, of course not.
Okay. Okay. I just, so I'm flagging.
No. What, what we're doing is we'd be giving ourselves a six-month lead time compared to if we were waiting until November or compared to other districts who might be waiting until November. So we would not be ready in December to be breaking ground on a single project, nor would the funding be available by the state at that time either.
Right.
But rather, it would simply give us a head start in a competitive process.
More time is always good. I'm not, you know, I'm not doubting that, but I'm saying no project is going to be shovel-ready at that moment. And that, that's the thing that I want to distinguish a bit.
One more data point. You know, we're talking about giving you as much information as possible and, and the question was rare, the, the point was raised about different turnout. So we have your history. We know what your voter turnout has been historically and, and I'll share that with you. So March of 2020, this was the last presidential primary, voter turnout in the community was 43%, okay? So 43% of the voters showed out in a presidential primary. Again, not even half the voters. November of 2020, the actual presidential race, it was 77%. So think about that delta for a minute, right? We're talking about 34%. About a third of your entire voters aren't going to show up in March, but are going to show up in November, right? We extracted that group from the survey and it showed that that group's a little bit more supportive, a little bit more supportive. But when we're evaluating all things, including our ability as a campaign to get a higher turnout, right? A disproportionate share of our supporters, that's a little bit of the delta that you're working with. Is that, that 43 to 77%? Does that make sense? Okay.
Any other questions? So next steps look like what? I think ultimately it's a conversation about whether or not we want to move forward, I think with a March timeline or a November timeline. Ms. Ponsor, Camp Card, I, I don't, you know, I haven't heard definitively where you stand. That's, that's your MO. But is it a March? Are you leaning towards a March? Are you leaning towards a November?
That is a great question. I feel like I've changed my mind like 100 times.
Very sorry if I may jump in. I think we're certainly in the information gathering stage. I'd caution against us taking a potential poll this evening. We can certainly, you know, as we're gathering this information, bring it back for additional feedback from the board at the upcoming meeting.
Okay. Then we will do just that. And Ms., Dr. Weisberg won't be here. So this is now becoming a bit of a thing. It, hey, it's not, it's not a problem. This is a trip you know, we've known about. So we're going to need to likely call a special on this. Just to be honest, right? To give it fair consideration and time. So if my board colleagues are okay with that, Ms. Keith Adrio, if you could start scheduling that with us.
Because waiting till November would be too late.
You could have the conversation without me.
No, we, it really, I think it's important that we have to, like, I'm not, I'm not trying to count votes. I think it is important that it's a fully seated board for that.
Yeah. I just don't want to center myself as being more important than anybody else.
You are. No, I'm just kidding. No. Excuse, excuse me. Yeah. All good, all good. I'm just trying to get the landing pads done. So if we could get that probably in the next two weeks, weeks, right, two weeks, next week?
Yeah. I mean, I.
Thank you for the flag.
Gone. I fly out the, that Sunday, 15.
Okay. So let's work on, let's work on identifying it. It is, it is a big priority. As soon as we get that out, we need to blast it. Just so that we are publicly disclosing this to the nines. Again, just ultimate transparency there. So board colleagues are supportive of that so far. And then we will have the March or November question. Are there any other questions we need to have on that agenda? Do we also need to have the contracting for who would run the campaign at that point in time? I would think so, correct?
I, I'd say let's differentiate. If we're going to do a special meeting, let's focus on the November versus March timeline and we can then march forward with the guidance we receive there.
Here's my concern. Again, tracking the timeline backwards, and again, I, I'm actively tracking this in my volunteer time. Ballots go out January or February 5th. They arrive at people's doorsteps. I get that there's a lingering, I get that blah, I get it. But they're going to vote traditionally about how polling says unless the poll's off in some way, shape or form, or missing data. That means we have to organize in December. And if we're approving a contract in early November, that's a 60-day, including the holiday season, to organize volunteers. That's why I'm, I'm, I'm just, if you consider that, if you have a timeline that works, I'm going to defer to you on that, but I'm, that's what I'm flagging. Because we're talking about basically three weeks in that November, December period that are functional, if everybody's in town. So that's my only flag there. So if we could consider that, just as we set the agenda, that's an important, Mr. Cantwell's been, I think, phenomenal at tracking this and moving this. And, and I'm challenging this, but I think it deserves that. And so we'll have just a good timeline so that we give this the best shot possible. If it's going to be a March, go. Okay? Ms. Tabit, are you good?
Hearing, if you don't mind, sometime in the next week or so, because two weeks from now, we have another board meeting.
Correct.
So it would, it should be in the next week so that the following board meeting, if whatever the decision is next week, we can, is that what you're saying? So that we could have.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm, what I'm, I've heard is, what I've heard from board colleagues is that there may be interest in March. So what I'm trying to do is schedule a meeting that would put that in the best position possible. Should that be the decision of the majority of the board? Yeah. So and then that way, but what I'm talking to Mr. Cantwell and saying is, hey, do we then contract with our campaign professionals at that point? In my opinion, maybe. And we probably should and not wait another week. But all the things. So Mr. Cantwell's going to consider all the things that I can't because he knows the technical side, right? So that's all I'm saying today. So I'm trying to give it the best shot possible, even if I don't agree. That's my job. Cool? Game on.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much for your answers.
They said it would be a short meeting. They said, no. How is everybody holding up? Okay. We've done two presentations. So there we go. And now it's time for our favorite, favorite part, our public hearing. We, I'm going to officially move to item 11A, the opening of the public hearing in the matter of determining the sufficiency of pupil textbooks and instructional materials for the 2022, 2023 year. Public hearing's now open. We do have one card on the public hearing, which is item 11A, and that goes to Schlossman.
Can I talk about that previous item a minute or two?
Nope. No, you may not. You may not pass go.
Oh, I will.
You'll try.
I'll get to it.
Thank you.
You know, I've talked about these textbook issues in the past and we're doing it all wrong. We're educating kids all wrong. The results show it. You did a nice job promoting the kids who were deservedly, you know, getting awards today, but you're, you leave out the 55% of the kids who are failing in several metrics. And really, we should be thinking completely different. I like to hear that Mr. Paramo was kind of headed in that direction, but he's not going far enough. We need to be teaching with AI, with individual, with kids, because the teachers, they got their hands full, they're spread thin. They take a test, they gotta grade those tests and, you know, it takes time and.
I'm going to need you to bring it back to textbooks.
Yeah, I'm talking about it.
You're talking about AI.
I'm talking about AI, AI as it relates to textbooks.
You can talk about that.
I am, but you can't interrupt me.
I can.
You cannot.
I am bringing you back on subject.
I'm talking about it. I'm entitled to.
You're talking about AI independent of textbooks. You can talk about AI as it relates to textbooks. Thank you.
I'm entitled to a preamble.
And I am entitled to keep this meeting in order and to keep this public hearing sufficient. So you can talk about it as it relates to textbooks, but keep it on subject. That's all I'm asking.
The Brown Act says you're supposed to give me leeway.
This public hearing is not about the Brown Act. So please, it is.
It is absolutely. The Brown Act applies.
Okay.
You can't pick and choose. I'm talking about textbooks.
Sir, your time is running.
Start talking about textbooks.
That's right. Talk about textbooks, please. Go ahead.
Well, now I'll just repeat myself.
It's your time.
Yeah. I think you're doing it all wrong. If it's my time, let it be my time and stop interrupting me.
You need to be on subject.
I am. I'm trying to, but you're playing a game with me.
I'm not. You keep answering.
It's disrespectful.
This is regarding insufficient.
Ms. Tabit.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Tabit, I understand. I understand. So, go ahead.
Look, I want our kids to learn the best way possible. Otherwise, we're spinning our wheels. It's year after year, we get poor results and the results get worse. So we need to do something differently with textbooks. We need to think outside the box and maybe a tablet that is in real time, whether a student is getting the question, if the student is learning, is a different way to go. That's what I'm trying to say. You know, I looked at the textbooks. I reviewed the textbooks, you know, that you're talking about. I just think, you know, you're spending money we don't need to spend. I told you years ago, it'd be okay if we never bought another textbook and we went in a different direction. We want the same thing, which is to educate kids. You know, I, I don't have a, I don't have a, a dog in this fight. My kids are older. I, you know, it is what it is. But I care about the community. I, I want our kids to learn and this is not the way to do it. And for you to, you know, interrupt me and take turns, it's, you know, it's inappropriate. And I'm going to talk more to you at the end. I'm only going to have three minutes, but you buckle your seatbelt.
Oh, thank you for that. Anything else? We're closing that public hearing. I'm buckling my seatbelt. And Dr. Paramo, go ahead. In responses, do you have any responses? Excellent. Board member responses. Seeing none, we will move forward. You know, I will say this. When you say something like buckle your seatbelt, I think you need to be real understanding of what that broadly means. And you can dance all you want, but you love to dance on vague language that implies on some level. And if you have any ambiguity, that implies some level of you're going to get it, I think you need to consider, one, the example you are setting, not just for children generally, but personally, who you are setting an example for. You're going to get it. That's, that's the implication. You know what?
That's what I said.
Okay. You can have a meltdown in the back. That's what you're doing. It's okay. Uh huh. Uh huh. Do you need a minute? Do you need a minute? Do you need a minute, sir?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Because you were, you were screaming. You were screaming and losing it. Well, this is not your time to talk either, is it?
But don't put words in my mouth.
And again, I, I don't know how many times I have to warn you. And this is what's really sad, is that we have an adult who can't follow the rules, who thinks the rules don't apply to him, who thinks he can just talk whenever. It's his world. We just live in it. Excellent. Excellent example. And, and you're the one who lectures us on democracy. How cute. We'll move forward to item 12A.
Mr. President.
Ms. Tabit.
I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 6 proclaiming October 8th through October 14th, 2023 as week of the school administrator as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. Any further discussion on this item or staff report? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries 5-0. Ms. Tabit, would you read the resolution?
If my colleague here would bring it up. Because I don't have a, my laptop's not working. Yeah. Or Armand has it right here. We'll use his.
Thank you. Resolution 6.
Resolution 6 proclaiming the week. Resolution 6 proclaiming the week of October 8th through 14th, 2023 as week of the school administrator. Whereas school administrators are passionate lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education. And whereas the title "school administrator" is a broad term used to define many education leadership posts. Superintendents, assistant superintendents, directors, principals, assistant principals, special education and adult education leaders, curriculum and assessment leaders, school business officials, classified educational leaders, and other school district employees are considered administrators. And whereas providing quality service for student success is paramount for the profession. And whereas most school administrators began their careers as teacher, teachers, the average administrator has served in public education for more than a decade. Most of California's superintendents have served in education for more than 20 years. Such experience is beneficial in their work to effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve student achievement. And whereas school leaders depend on a network of support from school communities, fellow administrators, teachers, parents, students, business, community members, board trustees, colleges and universities, community and faith-based organizations, elected officials, and district and county staff and resources to promote ongoing student achievement and school success. And whereas research shows great schools are led by great principals, and great districts are led by great superintendents, these site leaders are supported by extensive administrative networks throughout the state. And whereas Burbank Unified School District has distinguished, passionate, and quality site and district administrators supporting the teachers, staff, and students, and who deserve to be recognized for their service and dedication. And whereas the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership now. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Educa, oh, by the Board of the Burbank Unified School District, that all school leaders be commended for the contribution they make to successful student achievement.
Thank you very much, and to all of our school administrators, many of whom were here tonight in all their glory after a long day at work, thank you. To, you know, Principal Newp, to all the folks who are here, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, we certainly celebrate you. Moving on to item number 12B, adoption of Resolution 7, which was, this is the public hearing matter in the matter of determining sufficiency of pupil textbooks and instructional materials and instructional material funding realignment program, certification of provisional standards aligned instructional materials, 2023, 2024.
President Ferguson, I move that we adopt Resolution 7 in the matter of determining sufficiency of pupil textbooks and instructional materials and instructional materials funding realignment program, certification of provision of standards aligned instructional materials, 2023, 2024, as presented.
Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian, to move forward with the adoption of Resolution 7. Any further discussion on this item? This does take a significant amount of work. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just thank you. Seems like a simple, no. So great work to everybody, and thank you. With that, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries 5-0. Onto item 12C, approval of the employment agreement for Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
President Ferguson.
Ms. Tabit.
I move that the Board of Education approve the employment contract with Peter Knappich as Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services effective October 6, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. So obviously, our former assistant soup has vacated that role and has moved to the superintendent's chair. Fantastic. Well done. And we now have Dr. Knappich, who is very good at evading the spotlight in so many different ways, but is such a critical part of our family and our team, and does a lot of work that I think is highly technical, that I appreciate personally as a board member, but I know all of us really do. So it is a nice time to be able to approve contracts generally. And anyway, that's what we'll be talking about tonight in this item. Dr. Weisberg, and then we'll get to you on...
It's been pretty wonderful, the contracts we've been able to approve for personnel over the past couple of months, and I'm just super excited we get to do this officially for Dr. Knappich. I just appreciate how hard you work, and your patience, and your thoughtfulness, and your expertise. And, you know, the district is lucky to have you, and I'm lucky to be learning from you. So this is an exciting vote.
And I do just want to check in with the makers of the motion. There is an amendment on the desk for this, and so I want to make sure the motion is as amended. Yep, we're good. Thank you. Ms. Keterio, once again, saving me from a missed... Oh, she's, no, anyway. Dr. Armand. Dr. Armand.
Thank you. Everyone does call me Dr. Armand. Dr. Knappich, again, I know my colleague already said several wonderful things about you, but I want to also concur, but also add the fact that, you know, when it comes to understanding the system, being reasonable and logical, just working with you over all these years, I am so glad that, first of all, you're still here with us, and I'm so happy that you're continuing this. All the projects that you've worked on, we've worked on, thinking outside the box, bringing the community together, and understanding how diverse our communities. You're such a wonderful individual and such a genuine human being, and I'm very happy to call you my friend. Thank you for all you do.
That was just sweet. Dr., Ms. Tabit.
You've just elevated all of us, Dr. Tabit. That's awesome.
Oh, no. It's just really late. Sorry. My brain. And I still have to buckle my seatbelt, so.
Hang on tight. As Dr. Aga Khanian said, I am appreciative of Dr. Knappich as well. I know I've heard from multiple principals that when the need is there, Dr. Knappich is the first one to be at a school site with his, let's do this, let's figure it out. I'm here to help. I'm, you know, here to support you. And that's, I mean, that's a wonderful quality in a leader. And to provide support for another leader is, shows what a strong character he has, and I'm so glad he's ours. And then, of course, when you need something like, hey, we really should send kids to outdoor science school, and he jumps in and creates that program so that all those fifth graders got to go at a moment's notice. I hugely appreciate of what you do for our district every single day, Dr. Knappich. So thank you, and congratulations.
Oh, yeah, we got to vote, but, you know, let's hope, let's hope. Ms. Spencer-Campcar.
Thank you, yeah. I'm here to vote. No.
I've been there.
I want to echo my colleagues, but I also want to say, like, thank you for stepping into this role on a moment's notice, essentially. And we are lucky to have, obviously, John in situ to assist, but I know this takes a big load off of his plate. And so thank you for stepping up and stepping into this big need that we had. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion on this? So again, we're voting on item number 12C as amended. There's an amendment on the desk. Let's, for clarification, if we could pull the amendment. Okay, so, okay, so again, swapping the name in the... Yes, so, yeah, swapping the title in the termination of contract to educational services. And yes, that is the change across the board. So instead of Superintendent of Human Resources, which is listed multiple times in the termination of contract clause, it is struck out and then replaced with educational services, for clarity. So that is the amendment. That is the amendment on desk, just for clarity for members of the public. With that, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries 5-0. Dr. Knappich, if that's not a sign of confidence, I don't know what is. Yeah, amen, and congratulations. We are certainly not done on this front. We have more work to do on finalizing contracts and getting there. But this is a great team. We're moving things, so appreciate it from everybody, and their patience as we work these contracts through board agendas. With that, we will move to consent, the consent agenda, items 13... Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I was answering.
Yep, so 13A through 13Y, unless other, unless board members want to pull an item. Ms. Spencer-Campcar.
President Ferguson, I'd like to pull 13A for consideration at a future board meeting instead of tonight.
Okay, well, without objection, we'll pull item 13A.
And then I'd like to move to approve 13B through 13, what was it, Q? No.
Why?
More. Why?
Why?
13Y.
Excellent. It's been moved to approve consent items 13B through 13Y. Always a fun thing, but Ms. Keterio puts it in script for me, so thank you again. And seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. Any further items which board members wish to pull? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries 5-0. With that, we will celebrate retirements. And we have one, Mr. Bullington, and he began his service in 1991. We certainly wish Mr. Bullington a happy retirement. With that, we will go to our final period of public comment, where speakers will have three minutes. And do we have the card? I don't have a card. I'm going to get...
No, that was previous.
Do you intend to speak? Come on up. Well, you know what? Come on. I asked you. It's just a simple question. Come on up. You have three minutes.
Look, Mr. Ferguson, you use the word openly. You're far from open here. You're arrogant, you know, and you don't even understand the word, fasten your seatbelt. That's not fighting words. And you consistently put words in my mouth. It's what you do. I mean, that's your tactic, I guess. You know, I get three minutes. You guys each get as long as you want to twist what I say. I stand by every word I say. You know, you're really a hypocrite. You're two-faced. You treat people differently. And you advocate for equality, but that's not what it is, you know? You said to Ms. Walmsley, I wrote it down, what you said. You said, she makes this community great. You know, I think I make this community great too. You're shaking your head like you didn't say it, but you said it. And she does make the community great. She's got a long track record of service, but so do I. So do many others. But it's only the people that agree with you that make the community great in your mind. And I think it's everybody contributing different points of view, which you need to open your mind to. And you think you're knowledgeable about the Brown Act. You're not. That blue card I filled out that's in front of you, read what it says. It says, I want to talk. I checked the box. I want to talk on school business. And I had a whole list of things here to talk about that related to tonight's agenda, and you wouldn't let me. The Brown Act says I don't even have to. Are you paying attention? You're doing papers and all this kind of stuff. I'm talking to you directly, sir. Well, no, I'm supposed to direct it, which isn't. I'm supposed to direct it through the chair. So I'm talking to the chair.
Your time.
But you're doing a million different things. Be respectful. The Brown Act, read it. I've read it numerous times. I don't even have to fill out a card. I don't have to give you my name, my address, my phone number, nothing. When you called for that first public comment, I raised my hand. That's all I needed to do to be recognized. So you violated my rights tonight, and you showed your ass. You didn't, you weren't, you know, people come here and they're entitled to speak. And if it was somebody else who'd never been here before, you would have let them speak. It's only me because I disagree. Well, I don't know what I had all these things to talk about. Poor grades, settlements on the agenda. Goes on and on. Rethink your position, Mr. Ferguson. You're less than a decent public servant, less than an adequate public servant. You know, and you're supposed to, you talk about the example. You set a horrible example, you know?
Thank you. Your time is concluded. Any response from the superintendent? Any response from the board? With that, everybody have a great evening. Thank you for a great board meeting.